Good evening and welcome to the Board's Business Meeting on this day, February 24, 2020. We would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can get approval over the agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with those present. Dr. Smith?
Good evening, Ms. Evans and members of the Board. Tonight, we have a resolution to present to you for your consideration for Women's History Month, March 2020. Throughout our country's history, women have contributed to the values of the United States by advocating for equity, justice, and equal opportunity for all citizens. The Nineteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution granting women the right to vote originally was introduced in Congress in 1878, passed in 1919, and subsequently was ratified by three-fourths of the states in 1920. After being petitioned by the National Women's History Project in 1987, Congress passed legislation to designate the month of March as Women's History Month. Women have maintained a position of strength in our society, often responsible for the care, nurturing, and building of safe and secure environments for children. National Aeronautics and Space Administration astronauts Ms. Christina Koch and Dr. Jessica Meyer conducted a mission from the International Space Station as the historical first all-female spacewalk in October 2019. Women are now taking their rightful place in business, politics, and government, providing the benefit of their wisdom and determination by making public their voices. Therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools hereby declare the month of March 2020 to be Women's History Month, and be it further resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools request staff, schools, and the community to observe the month of March 2020 as Women's History Month and to acknowledge the accomplishments and contributions of women to our country, our state, and to Montgomery County.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we move to the next item on our agenda, Item Four, which is Public Comments. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of redress for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. Each speaker will receive three minutes for comments. Please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the button on the microphone to begin speaking and push it once more at the sound of the buzzer. We ask speakers to be respectful to all who have signed up, to testify by adhering to the time limits and stopping their testimony when the buzzer sounds. If possible, we say that you remain in the room in case board members have comments to make or questions to ask. If you have not done so already, please provide copies of your testimony to staff before sitting down. At this time, we will call Mondi Kumbula Frazier, Diego Uriburu, Omar Lazo, and Henry Montez to the table. And we will go in the order in which I called you. So we will begin with Mondi Kumbula Frazier. Push the button in front of you. Turn the light on until you can speak.
This one here?
Yes.
Good afternoon, President Evans and members of the Board of Education. My name is Mondi Kumbula Frazier, and I'm honored to testify as a constituent, a Cabin John Middle School parent, and a representative of the Black and Brown Coalition for Educational Equity and Excellence. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about an issue that is near and dear to my heart, providing equity and education for African-American and Latino children. I was born in a predominantly black neighborhood, and when I was six years old, we moved to a predominantly white suburb. For years, my mother, a veteran teacher with two master's degrees, drove 90 minutes round trip each day to teach in a lower-income neighborhood because she believed that the Black and Brown children there needed her most. As an elementary school teacher, she also drafted plays that enhanced the cultural education and self-esteem of Black and Brown children. In order to close the achievement gap for Black and Brown children in Montgomery County, African-American and Latino children need more veteran minority teachers and leaders in their schools like my mother. Per Superintendent Jack Smith, as our county becomes more diverse, it is imperative for us to be more vigilant in our recruitment of diverse teacher applicants. The reality is that while Black and Brown students make up over 50% of the students in MCPS, 73% of the teachers are white, 12% are African-American, 7% are Hispanic, and 6% are Asian. Recruiting and retaining minority teachers is important because studies show that they can help children improve their test scores, graduation rates, participation in advanced classes, and college attendance rates as well. In addition, when Black and Brown students are dealing with issues such as isolation, racism, frustration, and fatigue, minority teachers can help them navigate these challenges because they often have dealt with them as well. In furtherance of our goal to close the achievement gap for African-American and Latino children, we ask that you make a concentrated effort to increase the number of effective and diverse leaders in MCPS. We must be committed to providing equitable access to opportunities and resources so minority school leaders have all the training, resources, and support necessary to be successful. In addition, we encourage the county to continue pushing for contracts that will remove barriers to end the systemic patterns of having the most inexperienced teachers and leaders serve our most high-impact schools. For example, in MCPS, Black and Brown children are 62% more likely to attend a school led by a novice principal. The Coalition also urges the Board and others to adopt measurable targets in order to increase equity and excellence in education for Black and Brown children. We have to create definitive goals in order to hold ourselves accountable and for ensuring that this objective is achieved. Towards that end, we stand ready to partner with you by setting ambitious goals, issuing regular progress reports, and ensuring that we allocate financial and academic resources to achieve equity for all children in Montgomery County, to make sure that this is indeed a top priority. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Diego Uriburu, Executive Director of Identity and a proud member of the Black and Brown Coalition for Educational Equity and Excellence. I want to start by thanking the Board of Education for supporting the asks of the Black and Brown Coalition. Your words and actions have given hope to thousands of Black and Brown families who for decades felt that things were never going to change. I want to thank Board President Shebra Evans and every single member of the Board for having asked Superintendent Smith to provide you with a concrete plan regarding how the district will deploy resources to ensure that we have effective teachers and leaders in front of Black, Brown, and poor students who most need them. We look forward to reading the Superintendent's plan. I think it'll be end of March? Okay. We also want to urge Board members to continue to push steadfastly for the contracts to remove any existing barriers to ending systemic patterns of having the most inexperienced teachers and leaders serving our highest-impact schools, and to create conditions and incentives that will get results. We have formed a strong relationship with you, members of the Board, so please know that only the Black and Brown Coalition speaks for the Black and Brown Coalition. We cannot continue to perpetuate systemic patterns of inequities which have been built on the backs of Black and Brown families. The time to end the practices that negatively impact Black, Brown, and poor students in MCPS is now. Our communities can no longer withstand these levels of injustice. Our communities' relationships with the justice system and outcomes related to health, economic well-being, et cetera, all depend on us getting this right. For the sake of our families, the county, MCPS, and the associations, we must work together and find alignment in doing what is best to correct the wrongs associated with academic inequities affecting the most vulnerable students. Dear Board members, you have the power and the authority to remove the barriers that plague our children's education. Please know that you also have our support. Thank you very much for your continuous leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Lazo?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Omar Lazo. I am here, first of all, testifying on behalf of my three daughters, two of which are currently in Montgomery County Public Schools, and one is four years old, so she'll eventually be there also. So I first am here as a father, but I'm also here representing the Latino Democratic Club of Montgomery County as a treasurer, which is part of the Black and Brown Coalition for Education Equity and Excellence. As a parent, I'm very concerned with the statistics that have shown the disparity and disproportionate quality of education that our Latino and Black children receive in our county. I want to start off, first of all, by thanking President Evans and the rest of the Board for the work that has started, but not, obviously, you guys have been doing a lot of work for a long time, but with equity, I think this is a good start, and I think it's something that we're definitely a lot more hopeful, like Diego said, and looking forward to what's to come. So I would like to... I know that we're dealing with a very complex issue that will not be resolved in a year or even five years, but I hope the groundwork that we are laying now will be the catalyst for achieving equity for all of our students. We have seen some of the proposals that have already been presented by the Board that will put effective teachers and leaders in front of Black and Brown and poor students. This is a great first step, and I hope that we can work together to implement these changes and keep track of what is working and what is not. We acknowledge that this is not an easy task, but we urge the Board to make education equity a priority in all of the decisions that are made. Far too many of our Black and Brown kids have been left behind by unintended consequences of decisions that have been made here. During her last term as County Council President, Councilmember Nancy Navarro made it a priority for all the decisions to go through a racial equity lens. Our children's education is where it all begins. I hope that in the negotiations that are taking place, the Board does everything in its power to remove any barriers for those that are teaching our kids. We must find a way to provide access to our most experienced teachers to all of our students. Currently, our system statistically provides the least experienced teachers to our Black and Brown and poor students. I am glad that we finally have the statistics to back this up because now we know that one of the issues is, and we can work to resolve it. We also are adamant for the need of diversity in our schools. We know there is a challenge nationwide in finding diverse staffing, but we believe that it should be a priority. We need to make it appealing for people to come to Montgomery County to teach our children. My 10-year-old last year had a teacher who was Korean. She loved learning about the Korean culture and was so excited to learn so much more from her teacher. And I think I'm going to just... I'm just going to say thank you for this time, and obviously, I have everything written in my statement.
Thank you. Mr. Montez?
Good afternoon, and thank you, President Evans and the rest of the Board, and Dr. Smith, for this opportunity to testify on behalf of the Coalition, the Black and Brown Coalition for Educational Equity and Excellence. My name is Henry Montez, and I'm a member of the Coalition from the County Latino Health Steering Committee. The Coalition thanks you, as Diego had mentioned, for going forward and pushing for a concrete plan to see how resources will be helping our Black and Brown students. Such a plan is in keeping with the pledge of this Board's members to address the three asks of the Coalition at its first public meeting. Change being sought by these asks present challenges, but by looking at these changes through an equity lens, the focus on how to meet these challenges is sharper and provides direction on how they can best be addressed. Some recent MCPS activities and decisions may be useful examples. First, the reorganization of MCPS Central Office provides an opportunity to foster a strengthening of central office functions by defining with greater transparency how equity issues in the system apply to Black, Brown, and poor students in schools throughout the district. Second, the current negotiations with the unions allows a forum for explicating how the Coalition's ask and equity in the school system will have a central role in considering teaching and administrative leadership in each school. And third, the development of the all-in equity and achievement framework is an important venture. With this framework offering evidence of learning and an equity accountability model, schools may have a more unified strategy for achieving success. However, we suggest that the component of equitable access to resources be changed to access to resources through an equity lens. The change is to ensure that resources are not evenly distributed, but that most resources go where there is most need. The component about equity accountability model also needs to examine individual as well as schools' performances and hold people accountable for not performing it as agreed to, by reporting accountability findings in ways that are transparent for the public and having clear explanation about achievements and/or the lack of achievements. These types of systemic and systematic public information practices will allow for more community assistance and cooperation, such as with the members of the Coalition. We in the Coalition are here for the long term and are looking forward to continuing our collaboration and involvement with the Board of Education and MCPS staff in a community participatory environment that continues to enhance all student experiences in the school system. Thank you for your attention to these issues.
Thank you. So I don't see any lights, so I want to say thank you all for coming out this evening to give your public comments. We appreciate that, and we'll take everything that you said into consideration. Thank you. At this time, I will call up the next speakers, Katherine Katzen, Elena Katzen, Kavanaugh Bell, and Lauren Moskowitz. Kavanaugh Bell. So if you'll do me a favor, turn those two lights off, and then we'll have, unless you're Katherine. Okay, so Katherine, we'll begin with you.
Hello, my name is Katherine Katzen, and I'm a parent of two MCPS students. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and for all you are doing to promote equity in the county. It has come to my attention that the 12 MCPS schools with cell towers by them are almost all lower-income schools, and that every high school in the Down County Consortium, which has higher farms, minority, and ESOL rates than the rest of the county, has a tower. Blair High School has two cell towers near it that are on private property, and now a third 199-foot cell tower is being proposed by Montgomery County for Blair High School. While the county would be using the new tower for public safety radio antennas, once the tower is built, it will likely be used for multiple wireless carriers, and dozens of commercial wireless antennas would be located on it. The county is not committed to restricting the use of the tower to public safety-only antennas. I understand that the communities of Whitman High School, Wooton High School, Walter Johnson High School, and Julius West Middle School and Pyle Middle School oppose sighting of cell towers near them, and the Board of Education responded to their advocacy, and no new towers have been built at MCPS schools since 2009. Nearly 25,000 studies have documented the adverse health effects of exposure to radio frequency microwave radiation from cell towers, including neurologic effects such as sleep impairments, learning and memory problems, dementia and tinnitus, cardiac and blood pressure effects, endocrine and immune effects, genotoxicity, and cancer. In fact, Montgomery County is suing the FCC over the amount of research there is about the adverse health effects of cell tower radiation and how unprotected the FCC's 1996 guidelines are. In 2018, NIH's National Toxicology Program found an unusual cancer called schwannoma in the hearts of male rats exposed to cellphone radiation. Researchers with the renowned Ramazzini Institute in Italy found that lab animals exposed to environmental levels of cell tower radiation develop cancers, including malignant brain, glial tumors, and precancerous conditions, including schwann cells. It is also important to remember that children's skulls are softer and thinner and have more fluid content than those of adults. Furthermore, the human brain is still developing into the mid-20s. I'm asking today that the Board of Education and Superintendent, please oppose the location of a third tower by Blair. There are other sites not near schools that this tower could be placed on, and there are other existing towers that the proposed public safety antennas could be placed on. It is not equitable or safe for Blair students to sustain the radiation of three cell towers. Please send a letter of opposition to the County Executive and copy the Planning Board and County Council. Thank you.
If you'll turn your light off. Thank you. Elena?
Hello, my name is Elena Katzen, and I'm an MCPS sixth grader. Thank you for letting me talk today. I'm here to talk about an equity issue in the county and at Blair High School, which might be my school in a few years. The 12 MCPS schools with cell towers by them are almost all lower-income schools, and every high school in the Down County Consortium has a tower. There are already two cell towers within 700 feet of Blair on private property. One is 10 feet from the baseball field, and the other is less than 300 feet from the tracking field. A third 199-foot tower is proposed to be built right next to one of the existing ones. One of the existing towers, as well as the new tower, would be less than 250 feet from daycare and other homes, and about 800 feet from an elementary school. I'm here today to ask that you please oppose the location of a third tower by Blair High School because there are already two towers close to Blair. Please send a letter of opposition to the County Executive, the Planning Board, and the County Council. I have a right to go to a school without a cell tower, or worse, three cell towers next to it. I need to have the best chance possible to grow up healthy and to learn. I'm an athlete, and I would also like to know that I can join the soccer, softball, or track team and practice on the Blair fields without worrying about whether the radiation from the towers next to my school is going to harm me when I'm outside. On December 12, 2012, the American Academy of Pediatrics sent a letter to the Federal Communications Commission asking them to open a formal inquiry into radiation standards for cell phones and other wireless products because children are disproportionately impacted by all environmental exposures, including cellphone radiation. All the high schools I could choose from in the Down County Consortium have cell towers by them. I don't know if my family can afford to buy a house near an MCPS high school that doesn't have a cell tower, or worse, three cell towers by it. I don't know if my parents can afford to send me to a private school without a cell tower near it. I should have the right to go to a public high school without worrying about my health or missing out on doing sports outside. Please help us. Please oppose the location of a third tower by Blair by sending a letter to the County Executive, the Planning Board, and the County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Kavanaugh Bell.
Good evening. My name is Kavanaugh Bell. I'm a first grader at Massanaga Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you on behalf of my nonprofit called Cool and Dope. I'm on a mission to eradicate all bullying worldwide by 2030. That's why I came to you today to ask you to take a closer look at how you can make our schools more inclusive and safer spaces for change. There is a silent epidemic that no one wants to address that kids like me are being bullied, and kids like me are choosing suicide as the answer. This issue is well beyond boundaries and buses. It goes beyond zip codes, free reduced lunches, and even student-to-teacher ratios. There is a breakdown in student-to-teacher relationships that students no longer feel safe in the classrooms or the hallways, and feel like teachers can't help, especially if the teacher or the administrator is the bully. In fact, in the state of Maryland, we don't have a definition of teacher bullying or any training to identify it and stop it. So I urge you to improve the current bullying framework to address and prevent teacher bullying. Because that shows us that this is far more dangerous and emotionally damaging to students than any other type of bullying, see, the truth is, bullies come in all sizes, shapes, races, religions, and genders, and ages. So I need your help to do the hard work and make change happen because our safety and our mental health matters too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, stay there Kavanaugh. You can stay there. Yeah, stay there. Lauren Moskowitz?
I don't know if I can follow that. Didn't memorize it or anything. My name is Lauren Moskowitz, and I'm here to exercise my right to speak in front of the Board, according to Comar. This is a pair of scissors. It costs $2.53 for a pack of 12 from the warehouse, or $0.21 per pair of scissors from the warehouse. It is the only type of scissor available for purchase for student use from the MCPS warehouse. These are adapted pairs of scissors that cost roughly $5 each. They are only available outside of the MCPS warehouse. This is what most schools do because they cannot afford and adapt a pair of scissors for each student who needs them. They take rubber bands to a regular pair of scissors. This is a pair of mounted tabletop scissors. They average about $30 a pair. A class of seven students would spend $210 on having just enough pairs for each student, which they don't. They're lucky if they have one. For the amount of money for one, an education, general ed class could have 132 pairs of scissors. And this is a pair of switch-activated scissors. It costs about $100 with an additional 30 for the switch, which you need to activate the device. Therefore, it boggles the mind why MCPS funds all students the same. We're not asking for special education students to be funded from 1 to 130, which the truly equitable amount would seem in terms of scissors, but merely 1 to 2. For every dollar you spend on a student in general education, you should allocate $2 for a student in special education. And roughly 20 to 30% of a special education program or school's budget is used primarily to purchase materials used to maintain the health and safety of the staff and students in that program. It is our belief that things like gloves, bleach, and Clorox wipes, which are necessary to maintain the health and safety of students and staff, particularly in buildings with medically fragile students, should absolutely not come out of the instructional funds budget. The idea that a school with significantly costly needs, as demonstrated priorly just in terms of scissors, should then take their budget for instructional materials and use it to buy gloves so that staff is not exposed to bodily fluids of students as astounding. Those materials should be provided by the school system separately. Period. Those materials should be provided by the school system separately. Period. Lastly, for many of our special education students, ESY extended school year is legally a necessity in their IEP. However, special schools are not given additional funding for this month of school. They are funded for 10 months of school and operating for 11. It's like giving you enough gas to go 100 miles but told to go 110 miles, but you can't get any more gas. If there's any question as to the funding needs of special education schools, I ask for you to speak to administrators at any one of those schools because there's not one who would say, "Yes, we have plenty of money after buying gloves and changing pads and bleach. In fact, we have so much money, we have a pair of adapted scissors for each of our students." And if they did say that, you'd wake up soon because you were dreaming.
Thank you. Mr. Tindby?
Yeah, before you all move, I thank you all for your testimony. And Elena and Kavanaugh, thank you very much. You all deserve another round of applause for your testimony.
Mrs. Modrowski?
I was just gonna say, I know we don't have a lot of information about, but you started an organization against bullying. Is that correct?
Yes.
I was gonna say, because I've heard you speak before, and you're very impressive. I want to thank both of our students for being here tonight. Is it tonight? Is it this afternoon? It's tonight. But we appreciate you coming after a long day at school. I keep waiting for the day I see you on Ellen because every time I hear you speak, I think, "Yeah, that's where he's gonna be one day talking to us about bullying problems." So thank you for your advocacy on that issue.
So at this time, I just want to tell all our speakers again, thank you for coming, especially our students. And then we do have a teacher here that's taught all day, as well as our students have been in school all day. So we appreciate you coming out and giving your comments and your thoughts. So thank you, and at this time, we will call our next group of speakers to the table. We will have Joshua Schuman, Jay Kwan, Cara Jackson. And we will go in the order in which I called you. We'll start with Mr. Schuman. Turn the light on. Oh, you got it. You got it.
Sorry.
You can go ahead and speak.
I had to go first?
You have. Your light is on.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you. I know that you all have many tough decisions to make in the coming weeks, but I'm here with a gift every elected official wants, a problem that's easy to solve, costs no money, and has no opposition to the proposed solution. A bit of background, I'm an MCPS teacher. I'm also the coach of my school's Quiz Bowl team. You may have seen us on the television show It's Academic. It's in that capacity that I'm here today, but this is a system-wide issue, not an issue at my school. This year, new travel regulations were put in place. When these regulations were developed, a set was made for sports teams, performing arts teams, school-day field trips, et cetera. However, they forgot about academic competition teams like the One Eye Coach, as well as mock trial, forensics, debate, Model UN, robotics, Science Bowl, Chemathon, History Bowl, Mathletes, and a handful of others. Because we weren't included, we defaulted to being considered field trips by other groups. The new regulations place such an overwhelming and unnecessary burden on coaches and parents of academic teams, as well as administrators, business administrators, financial assistants, that it is not sustainable. Coaches are planning to quit, teams will cease to exist, leagues will fold, and our brightest, hardest-working students will miss out on amazing opportunities to pursue their passions and interests. Three minutes is too little time to get into all the details, but I'll cover the basics quickly. The new regulations declare that all local competitions must have their own field trip packet submitted for each individual outing. To make coaches do 10 or 15 extra of these packets is needless. Any event on a Saturday, Sunday, or that lasts past 7:00 PM is considered an overnight or out-of-area trip, and this requires a special field trip packet which is longer and more burdensome. Most egregiously, any parent who drives our team members or who interacts with the team is required to submit a fingerprinting and background check at a cost of $55 paid for out-of-pocket by the parent. For comparison, athletics have none of these same restrictions. To be clear, what I'm asking today on behalf of thousands of stakeholders is to end this inequitable practice and regulate academic competition teams the same as sports teams. The regulations that guide them are within the range of reasonable, but the same cannot be said about the regulations that bind us. The current setup will undoubtedly have the tragic effect of discouraging sponsors, coaches, and parents and students from participating in these activities. Asking a parent volunteer to not just spend their day, but to pay $55 for the privilege of volunteering is embarrassing. That MCPS would regularly tout its academic credentials in Newsweek rankings while also actively discouraging participation in academic endeavors is beyond the pale. A debate team parent is not more likely to be a predator than a soccer team parent. A cheerleader on top of a pyramid 90 miles away is not somehow safer than a forensic student sitting at a desk eight miles from home. A parent with limited financial means should not be prohibited from volunteering to help his child's team. A student whose parent works on Saturday should not be eliminated from participating simply because in order to get a ride, someone else has to pay $55 to drive her. It's unethical, and it's inequitable. I and the 100 to 200 other coaches I'm representing here, along with the thousands of parents and students on the aforementioned teams, call on the Board to take immediate action to address this. Have OSSI put the same regulations on academic teams that they do on athletics. We are not asking for any money or any large sweeping change in policy. We're not asking for anything that requires debate or study. We're asking for equitable treatment for all our students and reasonable demands for teachers that have already far outworked their stipends. We ask you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Smith. While there are many places to be and many other things to do on this fine evening we gather here because we care greatly about our kids' education and well-being. We want our kids to be successful, and we want our kids to be prepared for the future. Disruptive technological changes are becoming more frequent. Education systems around the world will need to adapt. Unfortunately, many, including ours, are having a hard time catching up. We remain wedded to all industries and practices. This does not bode well for our kids. We need to do something, and we need to do something fast. Let's disrupt. Let's disrupt the current paradigm by taking an interdisciplinary approach to STEM education. Let's emphasize data literacy, problem-solving, collaboration, and the responsible use of technology. All of these subjects and skills are not used in isolation, so they should not be taught as such. Let's disrupt the current paradigm by moving away from a system where learning is confined to school buildings and to one in which everyone has access to learning via different means. Let's disrupt the current paradigm by moving away from a system where learning is process-based and one size fits all. Let's reform the system via technology such that we can accommodate the diverse needs of each learner and enable students with traumatic experience and disruptive schooling to progress at their own pace. Many of us learn how to fix something on YouTube or Google. I think we can certainly record lessons and make it available for students to review when needed. This is just one example. There are so many possibilities. Anyway, when I signed up to testify, the Google form asked me what would be the subject of my testimony. I answered "boundary analysis." I apologize for that digression, and here's my two cents on the boundary analysis. I think the collaboration with the Planning Board and the MCDOT is required. The demographic factor is important, but it is intricately tied to urban and transportation planning. School boundary alone is not an effective tool if we are serious in addressing this issue. We must also be mindful how school boundary changes impact poor immigrant families. Families with less means, in general, have less means to overcome various challenges in their lives. We must not inevitably create more barriers for them with boundary changes, whether it be access to health services or to participate in their school communities. Lastly, while I understand that the MCPS is not in the business of transportation and logistics, it does move kids from point A to point B, it costs money to do that. So I think it will be beneficial to MCPS and for the Board to include metrics such as per pupil per mile cost and carbon emission metrics in the active tool that WXYZ is developing. We're in an increasingly dire climate crisis. We must also do our part in reducing emissions too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Cara Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Cara Jackson. A few years ago, I worked for MCPS in the Office of Shared Accountability, and it's come to my attention that recommendations from a report that I co-authored have been misinterpreted by some members of the community. Speaking in a personal capacity as a community member, I would like to address this issue. The OSA report, Understanding the Relationship Between Poverty, School Factors, and Student Achievement, provides a description of how school poverty and other factors are related to student achievement growth in MCPS elementary schools. The OSA report did not find a relationship between school poverty and achievement growth in elementary schools, but it did not conclude that concentrated poverty is good for students. It's possible that school poverty is related to educational attainment, such as high school graduation or college attendance. Those outcomes were not examined if they were outside the scope of the study, which only included elementary schools. Additionally, we found that higher concentrations of poverty were associated with less positive school climate, and students in schools with more novice teachers had lower growth in English language arts. In light of those findings, the report recommended targeting resources to address these factors in high-poverty schools. The report was silent on the issue of school boundaries because the research wasn't designed to answer questions about what would happen if boundaries changed. Those who oppose considering diversity as a factor in school boundary decisions appear to have taken the report's recommendation to mean that MCPS should keep schools socio-economically segregated in order to target resources. As long as MCPS has disproportionately high-poverty schools, providing additional resources for those schools does seem justified. But we also know from other research that students from low-income families can benefit from attending wealthier schools. Specifically, Heather Swartz's study, Housing Policy, School Policy, found that children in public housing who attended the school district's most advantaged schools outperformed the children in public housing who attended the district's least advantaged schools. Through the housing placement process, students have been randomly assigned to those schools, so we can be reasonably confident that these results reflect a causal impact. Concentrated poverty exacerbates inequities in access to things like field trips and extracurricular activities that contribute to students' social, emotional development and civic engagement. Socio-economically diverse schools can counter some of those inequities through PTA fundraising, while in segregated schools, PTA fundraising may exacerbate these inequities. In nearly 20 years in the education sector, as a teacher, policy analyst, and researcher, I have never seen evidence that maintaining segregation will lead to positive outcome for students. As such, I personally support efforts to make poverty less concentrated across MCPS schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. Thank you to everyone. And Mrs. Modrowski?
Yes, I have a question. So I know we have spoken before about the regulation for the field trips. And my question was, is it, why is it, and is there a reason why if they follow the exact same regulations, including the presentation of a schedule ahead of time, the sponsors attending the events, is there a reason we couldn't add the words "and academic" to the athletic teams section? So instead of reading athletic teams, it would read athletic and academic teams? While you all, I know you are looking at this issue, but while that was happening, is there a reason we couldn't do it in the short term? Just to make sure.
Dr. McKnight has actually been looking into this, so she's prepared to provide some information today.
Thank you. If we can get everybody to turn off their lights at the table, and that way she'll be...
Thank you so much, Mrs. Modrowski, for your question. So I'm actually gonna ask Ms. LeBlot to join me at the table here for a second. And one point of clarification we realized we needed to make is in the initial information that was gathered around overnight field trips for athletics, academics, and non-athletic teams, we realized there are some specific teams that are not falling within that nature. And so there is going to be a memo sent out, within a few weeks actually, to schools just to clarify even more specifically who all of these changes addresses and the process that they'll work within. And so that will be our opportunity to make sure we specifically call out the clubs that we did not in the initial part of the information that was gathered and given out in regards to following a process for field trips overnight and during the day field trips. So you'll see some updates there, and then I've asked Ms. LeBlot to join me because there may have been a few other things as it relates to, I know you've mentioned there being some questions around volunteers and their role, and that's something I think we want to learn a little bit more about to make sure we address that appropriately. But we definitely started out with making sure that we include all of the clubs, as you stated earlier. Ms. LeBlot, anything additional?
Thank you, Dr. McKnight, and thank you, Mr. Schuman, for your continued advocacy around this issue. As we all recognize, we really want to support our students in providing them access and opportunity to these very strong and enriching clubs. What we have found as the regulation was last revised, I believe, in 2004, but in 2017, as a district, we took a strong stand on our actions around reporting and recognizing child abuse and neglect. One of the things that came out of that policy, and thus the regulations around that, were specific categories of experiences that students would engage in and the role of parents and volunteers in supporting those activities. So when we updated the regulation around child abuse, reporting and recognizing child abuse and neglect, we put in some very specific actions around fingerprinting and background checks and specific categories of when that would be appropriate. To align the field trip regulations or the travel study and field trip regulations, we had to carry that language over. So that revision to the regulation around field trips and activities then incorporated the specifics around went to fingerprint and background check. We extended that because previously, it was anything that was a local trip, 50 miles or fewer from CESC, was considered local, but they had to be within the school-day operations. We recognized what a strain that was operationally. So we extended the time for a local trip to be until 7:00 PM. Those trips do not require any central office supervision or oversight. Those are trips we fully expect principals and the staff at the school to discuss, the principal to be fully aware to approve it. But we do expect all of those activities to be documented and monitored. As such, we want any parent who, or non-MCPS employee who has not been vetted, to, at a minimum, complete the online module around recognizing, reporting, child abuse, and neglect. But we also expect schools to put in safeguards and measures, both for the students, but also to protect our staff. So that includes, even if it's a walk to the park, that parents know their child is walking to the park, and that there is a parent letter or some type of notification permission slip that authorizes the school to allow the child to do that. We also expect that if there's transportation being used, that if it's MCPS transportation, that's documented. If it's non-MCPS transportation, that's documented. And those are just good, strong practices for safety and notifications so that everyone is aware. If it is a local field trip, we don't need a packet coming in to us. We just ask, if that schools are documenting that on a local field trip log, they've always documented, the expectation has been that they always document that because we want to know where our students are, what the occasion or the objectives of that outing are. And if there is a case of an emergency, we want to be able to access that group and pull them in or deploy support to them. So those are the local field trips. The change that happened this year was not around what is local and what is extended day. It was that we really saw that we have so many opportunities happening across the district and so many unfortunate incidents nationally, locally, globally, not really our school system incidents, but factors that are impacting how we want to make sure our students are safe. And we shifted from an antiquated paper submission process to an online submission process. What that did was elevate for us many gaps in our monitoring. It was meant to be a process improvement so we could quickly turn around our response to schools for those events that needed school central office approval. But what we realized were that, over the course of time, some of the expectations had become lax. And where it's really pinging us are, as Mr. Schuman has pointed out, on things like it's academic, the debate clubs, some of those non-athletic academic organizations and teams. In the past, the sponsor has been managing that. The principal has been very much involved in that. But that attention to the documentation piece and making sure we at central office knew if a student was traveling away somewhere was not always carried through. And we have cases where it was in places, and so it was and was not. So this consistency piece is what the change this year, the online piece, occurred. So I just wanted to give that context around the process and where the regulation has actually not changed since 2017, but just the online submission process has changed. Currently, and in the past, athletics always had a process they collaborated with OSSI around where all of the athletic competitions and events were categorized and approved through Dr. Sullivan in system-wide athletics. His team would review schedules. They have a way to coordinate schedules. They can look at what schools are going where, and they can develop a full plan, with the exception of the playoff games and those events. So that was then vetted through their office and their team who has the content expertise around what is appropriate and where students should be, and also to manage the volunteers and the coaches around that. That information would then be shared with OSSI, but also the Office of the Chief Operating Officer, again, for those purposes around when there's a blizzard. Officer, again, for those purposes around when there's a blizzard, when there's some other event that we can manage and support that. We have long challenged with fine arts because of the curriculum connections to that. And we've kind of done these informal practices with the supervisor for fine arts to help manage adjudications and performances that happen in the afternoons, sometimes on the weekend. But a lot of their weekend travel are really the marching bands and other groups and performances that are traveling with athletics. So we were able to manage where those students are involved and who's involved with those through that close-knit collaboration between fine arts and athletics and our office. Which then brings us to our non-athletic academic teams. They are numerous, they are wide, and we don't have a way to have a centralized content expert to do one, the calendaring around that, and to work with the schools to make sure we're pulling all of that piece together. So that was one of the reasons why the work group that is working on our extended day and beyond-the-day school-sponsored activities invited Mr. Schuman and some of his colleagues to help give us a little breadth on what the experience is like for them. We were able to categorize for athletics just the number of events, and that's what we're trying to do now with academic teams. But what we have found is that in just our perusal of what we have been able to collect this year is that most of the academic events do not fall into the extended day out-of-area. They're mostly local field trips and would go onto the log, which don't require any paperwork or procedures coming in. And even with them being the local field trips, that also minimizes who needs to be fingerprinted because we don't require that for the local field trips. However, the bigger concern are when we have students that might be traveling with persons who have not been fingerprinted or background, and there's an overnight trip, or there's something that's a long-distance trip. It's still that piece around safety and security and the liability piece that comes into play. So part of the reason is we want to make sure we have consistent practices. The other piece is our ability to make sure we're managing that, to make sure we are being as fully supportive of all those activities that are so important to all of us and that our students and families value.
So I just wanted to make sure. So thank you, Dr. LeBlot, for bringing all of that forward. There had been an extensive work group kind of looking at some of these issues that Mr. Schuman has brought forward to the board today. So again, I just wanted to point out, the follow-up is that there will be a memo being sent out to the schools to address the specific clubs or teams that were not called out in the initial correspondence that went out. And then as well, I think we'll also definitely make sure we include the use of volunteers and some specifics around how we work with volunteers for them to have the opportunity, but yet not let it be a barrier for them to support the activities.
Okay, because I know that in some instances PTAs aren't, if, even if they could afford it, they're not able to pay for the, for the fingerprinting and stuff, does I understand it?
It's.
Are we allowed to supplement that kind of stuff or no?
I would think this would fall into the same category as any non-academic or other activity. When schools take students on field trips, then they are allowed to support the volunteers or the chaperones who may or choose to or may not be able to pay for those fees.
And this is definitely a piece we need to look into. We'll be clear on that to make sure we're sending out the right information to the schools around the use of PTA funds and other things for volunteers.
I'm just going to say I can vouch for that because when we started doing that, my youngest was in elementary school. So I did have to go through the process as a parent to volunteer, and there was no charge for.
Well, I just, my concern, I appreciate the background, by the way, because, you know, it's, it's good to hear all of the, what you all are doing and what you're working on, how you're working on it. I just, you know, I have concerns. I obviously feel very strongly, they should have to follow the same specifications and everything that any of the athletic teams do. I just want to make it so that there aren't additional barriers that would prevent our academic teams to be able to participate in these type of clubs. I see Mrs. O'Neill has her light on. I don't know if this takes up.
Mrs. O'Neill? Sure. So I just want to be clear, you know, we do need a consistent practice across athletics, academic clubs, and arts. And, you know, we should not have a barrier, but we need to protect our children. You know, there have been documentations of people, not in MCPS, but drivers in other nonprofit worlds molesting children in cars and, or grooming. And so we do need to, you know, our child abuse, preventing child abuse and neglect is a very, very important policy here in MCPS. And it needs to be consistently implemented, and it should not create a barrier to kids but participating in activities. And then the other piece, since I've been around a million years, I want to say the issue of knowing where our kids are going on field trips may not seem that important, but I was here during the DC Sniper, and it became incredibly important. I happened, Jerry Weis allowed me to listen in on the Council of Governments' call among the police chiefs and the superintendents, and there was a shooting at a rest stop in Virginia. And a football team had gone down to Virginia to play a game because there was a feeling outside of the DC area, they were okay. But one of the buses broke down, the kids were in the parking lot, and shortly thereafter, there was a shooting of a gentleman in that parking lot. And the message was left at the scene, your children are not safe anytime, anyplace. And it was horrifying. It was absolutely horrifying. And we had some activities that went on to be outside, outside of Montgomery County, thinking that it was safe. We need to know where our children are and who they're with, and we need to do our best to protect them. And I, I know that all of us sitting here around the table want that. I want kids to participate in its academic, it's a one, you know, I enjoy watching that program and cheering on our teams and Blair, who wins frequently, does well. But I actually, as a teenager, went to an its academic taping a million years ago. But I, I think that the issue is that we have to be consistent across all and who's driving. Because I remember, you know, when my kids participated in athletics, the permission slip was, my child may ride with an adult, my child may ride with another team driver, not ever a good idea. And so we, we just need consistency and to create equal opportunities for everyone.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Dr. Daca, then I'll go back to you.
I don't know. Mr. Schuman, was that the question you were asking about the online, you know, registering these activities, or was there something else?
No, I mean, everything that Dr. LeBlot shared is, is things that I knew, and I, I, after two or three months, oh, sorry. And after two or three months of advocating for this and talking about it to anybody who will listen, several people in here and at central office, I feel like I'm pretty clear on what the policies are. But the, this question I have is how can we make it so that it's more equitable? And I, I don't know, I mean, I jotted down a couple of responses while I was listening. I don't know if I have the opportunity to check if those are not.
I thought I heard something of that because I'm familiar with its academic. I've gone many times with Blair, and yeah, we all think they've done a good job. But everybody has to provide his or her own transportation, that's for the cheerleaders, for the band, all that. So when you mentioned athletics, I was wondering if you meant that we need to support that more as some of our athletics are supported.
No, I mean, I, I, the last thing I want is to put these burdensome regulations on the athletic teams. I'm looking more, I mean, I feel like if those regulations are good enough for them, and I think we'd all agree that they are, then they should be good enough for us as well.
Consistent. Ms. Dixon, you had your light on for Mrs. Smodrowski.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that I'd like to know is, you know, when will the committee be done with its work, you know, and have some decision just in terms of, you know, what, what we can expect? Because we have probably about 1,000 students who are involved in these activities. We want them to, you know, stick with it. They bring us a lot of glory, for want of another word, as well. And, you know, when would the memo go out to the schools that you're going to send out?
So the memo, we were looking to send out in just a couple of weeks because the work group has done quite a bit of work, quite a bit of work around this and all of the things that Dr. LeBlot, excuse me, earlier, I mentioned have been some things that have been brought up. But from what Mr. Schuman is bringing to the board today, there are some minor tweaks that need to be done, and it really is the consistency of the process. And so it, it really is going back and looking at who was not called out in that memo, in addition to athletics and non-athletic teams. And again, I think taking the opportunity to be a bit more precise in the use of volunteers because what we don't want to do is compromise student safety and be consistent with that process. But we also need to just understand a little bit better what some of these barriers are.
Dr. Smith?
Can we say, Dr. McKnight, that we'll have that out on March 12th?
Is that two weeks?
Two weeks and two days.
That should, I was going to say that's a little over two weeks, so yes.
So we should have that, and we do want to remove all the barriers we can while maintaining the integrity of every safeguard we can. So we will work on that.
Appreciate that. And there's four Saturday competitions in my team as scheduled to be now and then, and I'll let them know they won't be able to go, but then hopefully later in March we'll be able to start attending again.
So just, when the memo comes out, though, then that'll be resolved? Okay, I just wasn't, I just wanted to clarify that that's what the memo was going to do.
Wait a second. So there are four that they won't be able to attend between now and March?
Correct. I mean, they, if they decide on their own on a Saturday they want to go do something that, but they certainly won't be attending in any official capacity and, you know, representing our school in any official capacity.
They can't, you can't turn in a form? I mean, that's, it, what, what is the barrier? Is it the drivers or the?
It's partially the drivers, and it's, it's partially the amount of paperwork that would have to go into, and I know, one concession we recently learned of is that for the trips that require OSSI approval, we can submit all of those on one packet. But when you're doing something where the events are planned mostly by, you know, teenagers and college students, you don't always know in September what competitions you'll have in March, and you can't add to the already submitted packets, you have to resubmit a whole other packet. So it's possible that for these upcoming competitions, you know, I could submit the long extended overnight field trip packet for our 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Saturday trip. But most of the coaches are, are, you know, in the grand scheme, not willing to do that for every trip. And I could, I got, if I take the car seat, the child seats out of my car, I can take four kids. But if I have eight kids that want to come, somebody's got to pay $55 and submit themselves to a background check in order to bring the rest of the team.
How long does it take to get the background checked?
Maybe two weeks. It just, it depends, and we can expedite those. I just wanted to set a little context around the packet. The packet consists of the transportation mode form, either you're using MCPS transportation or not. You don't submit both forms, you submit one. So in the case that Mr. Schuman described, it would be MCPS transportation is not provided, and it would be the parent permission letter that gives the context around what their child is participating in. And then the one, one form that says this is where we're going and this is what we're doing. So that is the extent of the approval packet. I just wanted to clarify, it's some basic, you know, information that is informative but also sets some standards around what the activity involved is.
So the 9:00 AM to 5:00 on a Saturday is still considered overnight?
It's, it falls into the category of extended day, and that's one of the parameters that the work group is looking at, is to extend that adjustment specifically for this category of academic teams, that if it's a daytime and it's not on a school day, that we could still consider it a local.
Dr. Smith?
So I'd like to suggest we start this out offline because there's a lot of additional business, and we can do that. And so we'll be in communication with Mr. Schuman and the other coaches about the next two weeks, because I think it would be two Saturdays before March 12th, right?
Uh, something like that, yeah. And just for, to what you just said last, changing Saturdays to be, like during daytime, to be considered as local trips, which wouldn't require the fingerprinting and, and the extra paperwork, would be a huge step in the right direction for all the coaches, I think.
Well, thank you all for coming to speak to us today. And at this time, we have two more speakers, and we apologize for the delay. We want to be respectful of your time as well. We will now hear from Karen McKeonan and Tracy Holbert. If you could please come to the table to give your testimony or comments, I'm sorry.
And we can begin with Ms. McKeonan.
I'm exercising my right, according to Kumar, to speak directly to you about planning time. My name is Karen McKeonan, and I am a fifth grade teacher at our Cole Elementary. A recent post stated the amount of time you spend doing your job, so I thought it might be enlightening to hear about the amount of time a teacher spends doing just one aspect of their job, instructional planning. Preparation for our new week begins over the weekend. Grading work and assessments, analyzing data, determining the best instructional strategies to meet every child's needs for every subject we teach. I mean, every student is at a different level in every subject. There's no one lesson fits all. We sort through curriculum, refine our objectives based on data, and make a rough outline for our weekly instructional plan, all of which can change in a blink of an eye. These tasks can take the entire weekend. Our official work week, however, is filled with two collaborative planning sessions lasting at least an hour each time. We get 20 minutes before students arrive to prep for the day, unless, of course, you come before your duty day begins, as so many do. We may get 20 minutes at the end of the day unless you still have students in your room waiting for their buses. The other two to three days are spent grading and giving feedback, searching for culturally relevant materials, reaching out to parents, and meeting with specialists about our kids. The list goes on and on, and things not finished are carried home and worked on for a good two to three more hours. And as a teacher at an ISY school, we're innovative. We've implemented new mindfulness curriculum as well as Project Lead the Way, both of which require more planning time so students experience the best of both of these and to ensure that they were implemented with fidelity. I mean, by the time this year's over, we will have had 210 days to not only plan our regular curriculum, but these additional programs as well, while we come up with a variety of other experiences for our kids. Why does student, why do teachers need all this planning time? Why is this so important? We need time for our students. Our students deserve more time invested in them. Our students deserve authentic, real-life classroom experiences that only can come from meaningful planning time. I urge you, the members of the board, to reconsider your thoughts on planning time. We may be considered the lowest-level employees, some even call us losers. So I guess I'm just a loser who wants the time to do my best for my kids.
We don't think you're losers. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so now we'll go to Tracy Holbert.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Holbert, and I'm an elementary art teacher. I want to start by thanking you all for taking care of the arts funding issue that I spoke on last year, so that's great, thanks. I'm very passionate about what I teach, and I love my students. However, in my opinion, the allocation system for specialists in this county is flawed. allocations for art, music, and PE are based off of the number of homeroom teachers at a school will have for next year, and they were just released last week. This is the second year that I have had to teach at three different elementary schools. It is stressful trying to remember what materials I need for which building, on which day, and I have six, sometimes seven, different preps. I have been at my base school each year that I have taught in MCPS. However, the other points that make up the rest of my full-time allocation have changed every year that I have been in the county. This means that every spring I am shuffled around, and I have to interview for the same job that I'm already doing well. I have taught in six different schools over six years. I am also currently the elementary art teacher that teaches the most students in the county, which is 665 children. I give my heart and my soul to my work, but it is not reasonable to think that I am able to give all 665 children the care and attention they deserve. I've been advised to find a 1.0 position at another school. advised to find a 1.0 position at another school to solve the issue. I love my homeschool and the program that I've built there. Moving to a position at one school does not remove the problem. All it does is give the problem to a different teacher. If I move schools, someone else will have to take my three, which could be a first-year teacher who'd feel like quitting after the first month. I asked that we conduct research to find out how we solve this issue that is affecting so many people in our school system. Odd-numbered allocations, which cause a split day schedule, cost the county reimbursement for gas, cause tension between principals over scheduling, and less classes are taught due to travel time. If we would round up to even-numbered allocations, it would be easier to coordinate between schools. A survey of elementary art teachers revealed that over 17 of us are also teaching more than our contractual 25 weekly classes because MCPS has not provided the funding to update allocations between spring projections and the first day of school. Specialists are overscheduled, perform numerous duties outside of the classroom, and travel between buildings. Yet our needs are not prioritized, even though we are also academic subjects that are essential to the whole child. If art, music, and physical education are a priority to MCPS, we need to take better care of our educators. I want to give the best education to my kids, but I can't pour it from an empty cup. Too many of our teachers are at more than two work sites and is contributing to burnout. If MCPS wants to be considered a desirable place for teachers to come work in, we need to fix this issue. It is a question of what our students deserve, what our teachers deserve, and how we respect the profession of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sebstry.
I had a question going back to some previous testimony about the issue of cell phone towers. Could I get some more background information about what schools have them and the decision-making process in terms of putting them on a school?
Sure. Sure. We can provide all of that information. The system hasn't put any cell phone towers on any school property since 2009 or 10. The testimony tonight was specifically about adjacent to a school, but we can send you a good set of background about what has happened in the past, what happens with the funding in the different clusters, and how those decisions are made or were made at that time. Okay?
Thank you.
Then could we get some information on staffing allocation as it goes to the specialists? So when we get an increased number of students, like how we handle that? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you all for your time. Oh, Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to thank our teachers for coming out this evening. You know, you worked all day today and, you know, especially driving between two and three schools is, we know, it's not good. So thank you very much for that as well.
Okay. Thank you all. And this concludes our public comments portion. Now we will move on to board superintendent comments. I will start with Mrs. Smodrowski. We'll go around the table. Board comments.
So just going to give a couple of quick shout-outs. I wanted to thank the Blair Cluster for hosting us for our cluster meeting the other night and to Mabe for hosting the legislative luncheon with these members of the state legislature. I was going to say not just delegation because it was the entire state. Couple of little stops that I made was I went over to Summit Hall Elementary School and checked out the new curriculum. And I'm very pleased with what I saw there and what I heard from their staff. So it just, if anyone hasn't gone, had a chance to go take a look at it, it was really encouraging to see because I'm excited about the curriculum, but it makes you really see how the staff is embracing it and how it's working for our students. I also went in toward our alternative programs. And I just want to say thank you very much for the work that you all have done on expanding the additional programs and really being able to give kids an opportunity to learn in a different manner. And when I walked into the building in the Silver Spring Center, I knew immediately, I was like, my son would have flourished here because it was a great feel and a great environment there. And I am hopeful to be working some to put together a PTA for them. So because they have a very fluid attendance frequently, there's not necessarily any one person who's there. And so there's no staff appreciation days or any of those type of things that are typical PTAs do for our staff and our schools. So if anybody knows anybody who might be interested in serving along with us to put together a volunteer PTA position, please feel free to contact me and share with your friends. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Neil.
Yes. We earlier adopted a resolution about Women's History Month, and I just want to give a shout-out to the League of Women Voters. This year marks the 100th anniversary of the founding of the League of Women Voters. And I hope that maybe we can send a letter to our local League of Women Voters chapter because they have been great partners in advocating in Annapolis on various issues over the years, particularly when it was the Thornton Commission. They were out there testifying and providing information to the community. And every election cycle, they host a candidate forum for the Board of Education candidates. So I think it would be nice if we wrote them a letter congratulating them on 100 years. It coincides with the ratification, well, the actual adoption of the women's right to vote. And then I too want to comment on the visit to the Blair Cluster. We had an amazing turnout. We also had two special guests, Mr. Elrich and Councilmember Tom Hucker. And I wish that other elected officials would come with us to cluster meetings because I think that they would have a better understanding of the plethora of needs in our schools.
Do we invite them?
No, we don't. I mean, it's our meeting with the PTAs. And it's always been the board. I can't remember a time that we had a county executive or a council member, but, you know, it would be, it gives you more insight into the needs and, you know, challenges and the positive programs going on. But anyway, I just, I throw that out. I, you know, we want it to remain as our meeting with the community, so.
And the difference could be that Councilmember Hucker has kids in the school system. So that's his, yeah. So I think he was there in two capacities. But I agree with your saying, though.
Would you like staff to draft a letter of appreciation and commendation for the League of Women Voters?
Absolutely.
For the League of Women Voters, for the board to review and make revisions to?
Yes.
So we'll draft that and get it to you.
Perfect. Good idea, Mrs. O'Neil. Dr. Daca.
Yes, I know. Ms. Dixon gave us all of these election, all the election information folders from League of Women Voters. Thank you. So we're serious about it. I just wanted to say Catherine Johnson passed away today. Many of you may have seen that this morning. She was one of the mathematicians who worked with the space program. Yeah. And she was a sorority sister. Oh, excuse me. Okay. I just wanted to mention some of the places I went to because it was Black History Month. And Montgomery County Alliance of Black School Educators had their program with students and with staff on, they called it How Sweet the Sound. So they did music. They had instruments. They had dancing. Students were very much involved in it. This was at Shady Grove Middle School on Thursday night last week. And they've been working a long time and they have to do this kind of thing in order to raise funds for the scholarships that they give. And they give two scholarships to each high school. And the high school presents the students' information and they make a choice there. On Friday, Friday evening, at Seneca Valley, they had their international night and it was really well-attended and lovely people, great families, great kids. Many countries were featured: Ecuador, El Salvador, Ghana, Puerto Rico, the Ivory Coast, Jamaica, Peru, Pakistan, Palestine, Colombia, Mexico. And anyway, they provided the information about their countries. They did music or they did dances that were typical of their countries. And what I really liked too was that the life skills teacher had his students perform as well. And they did, they did American or U.S. culture. They did hip-hop. But they were just, it was just lovely to watch them. So. And Black History Month program that was done by the National Council of Negro Women, and that fits with our March program, was, they had a program on Saturday at Mount Calvary Church. It was Sojourner Truth's Triumph. It's a one-person show with Sojourner Truth. And I found out so many things about her personal life that I'd never heard before. The person who wrote it was there. He wrote the program after doing the research. And Sojourner Truth was performed by Mrs. Chapman. And they have a small theater group. And they said that they're looking for a male student between 16 and 25. So I was really excited because, you know, Ms. Dixon and I were at Sankofa at Blair. And there were a couple of students that...
Remember Deandra?
Yeah, I do. He was really great. And Sunday, I attended Jack and Jill Incorporated. They had a spelling bee, which is something they've had for the past 11 years. And there were many students involved in that. It was at Montgomery College, right across the street at Theater Arts. So anyway, thank you.
Ms. Sebstry. I wanted to share what I heard at the Blair Cluster meeting this past week. And we heard a lot of things, but something that kept coming up time and time again was this issue of trauma. Just really feeling that they needed more help addressing the trauma that the students were bringing to school. So we hear a lot about this in the community. We know it's a reality. I've been hearing the term trauma-informed practices for a long time. So I really wanted to ask for a follow-up to really understand what are we doing, what the need is according to the school system, and what's the vision? And we're not where we want to be, but where do we want to go with trauma-informed practices? Who leads it? What does it need, what does it take to have a whole school be trauma-informed so that we can make some progress in really addressing the needs of students that really need this support?
Absolutely. We will provide all of that information.
Mr. Tinby.
So on February 14th, a few of you all came. There was this SMAB nominee convention. First, I wanted to thank Shella Cherry for helping run the behind-the-scenes work, which went very well. There were hundreds of students in attendance. I know Ms. Wolf, Ms. Smodrowski, Ms. Seabrook, and a few others came to the event. And the two finalists for my successor are Nikasante of Richard Montgomery High School and Vicky Kitter of Magruder High School, two students which I'm confident will do a great job next year at SMAB. And it was a great event in general. And between all of that, I had the opportunity to visit probably around 15 schools, bounced in between middle schools and high schools, which was quite the experience. And also tomorrow, I am having my Student Town Hall. I've extended the invitation to board members. I hope students can make sure that they come out as well. It'll be at Tilden Middle School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it will be a great experience. I'm approaching the end of my term, but I'm still trying to talk to as many students as possible. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
So thank you, Madam President. I did have the opportunity today to visit Paint Branch High School. And it was a pleasure to spend some time talking with Tracy Pettis-Jones, who is the acting principal and was one of my assistant principals there as well. And we had a chance to drop into the Panther Paw, which is a restaurant, part of the restaurant management program there. And they have a wonderful new chef. And the teacher now is called Chef. And the teacher came out and I thought he was one of the students. Quite handsome, I would say as well. But I just wanted to thank him for the quiche that he made this morning. And then, you know, I visited the Avid Program, the NJROTC Program. And I have to say, the building is still incredible. It looks so pristine, like the day we moved in there in August of 2012. And I wanted to just give a shout-out to, well, the former principal, Miriam Yarber, and the students and the staff, and to Wilbur Castro, who is the new building services manager there. I just was just blown away. It just looks brand-new. And it is still, I think, the most beautiful school in Montgomery County. And just really, really enjoyed the opportunity to go and visit today. So to all of you Panthers at Paint Branch, congratulations for doing just a great job. And it almost looked like I was in a college. Everyone was attending to, working in class. And I don't think they were putting on for me today. I really don't. But it was just, it was a really, really nice visit. So I also wanted to talk today to follow up on, you know, my interest in reading and seeing if we can get some more of our third graders reading on or above-grade level, you know, when they come out of the third grade. And I did have the opportunity to sit down today with Dr. McKnight. And I had actually dinner with Dr. Navarro about a week ago. And by the way, she did, you know, introduce me to a new restaurant up county that's called Felicious, Lushus, a Vietnamese restaurant. And I would recommend that to anybody. It was on Darnstown Road. And it was just wonderful. But we talked about reading, you know, as well. And I had, well, probably about seven questions that I'm hoping we can follow up on. And I'm really pleased that, you know, in talking with Dr. McKnight today, that you are in fact working on at least three of those right now. So I did want to share those. I gave a copy to Ms. Van Dyke, Victoria. Her affectionate name is Queen Victoria. And, but to share what those questions are. I have just given this so much thought in the three years I've been here. And as most people know, I'm a secondary person in middle school and high school, but have really focused on our elementary schools. And I think that reading is the key to everything that we do here in MCPS. And being able to read is really a human right. And in lots of ways, it's, you know, the new civil right of, you know, the 2020s. And so what we really want to see is some improvement year after year, whether it's 1%, 2%, 5%, 10%, in our third graders coming out of third grade and into fourth grade as well. Being able to read on or above-grade level. As you know, 50.3% of our students, and we have that information now disaggregated by each elementary school, total number of students, white students, African-American, Hispanic, Asian, more than, you know, one race, ESOL, farms, and also special ed. And so, you know, some of our, and we've done a great job educating students and teaching them to read probably over a million over the years. But not all of our students are, you know, meeting with success. And so, you know, my questions are, and I think, you know, and I'm not, you know, I leave this to you all because I've learned, you know, this is the purview of the superintendent and his staff. But the questions that I have as a board member, I did want to share with you. And to dig down a little bit deeper and find out, one, and these are the ones that I know you're working on because I talked with Dr. McKnight about McKnight about this today. So what is the state of reading instruction in each elementary school in our county? What is the perspective of the principal at the school? The reading specialists, third-grade teachers? And some of our elementary schools have a reading intervention teacher. And how did they make that decision, or was that an allocation? So a lot of the Title I schools get extra funds. Some have the reading intervention teacher, some don't. And then, I'm really interested in when the directors go out and meet with principals at the elementary schools, you know, what, what do, you know, questions do they ask, you know, just about reading in the schools? The second one that I know you're working on as well is, how does the reading specialist spend his or her day typically, typically during the week? And, you know, what percent of their time is spent in the direct instruction of students, especially students who, you know, experience some difficulty? And then, the third question was, what opportunities are provided for reading specialists to work together and benchmark best practices? And how often do they get the opportunity to do that? So, those are the three that, you know, Dr. McKnight shared that, you know, we're working on. So the other questions that I have is, it'd be interesting to just have a profile of the reading specialists in MCPS. You know, how many are men? How many are women? You know, what are their years of experience? And what are the credentials that you need to have? And then, the fifth question was, how does the reading specialist work with students who have difficulty in learning to read? What interventions are used to help students? I know that, you know, just from talking with some of the reading specialists and counselors and others that work in elementary schools, that some are pulled to do other jobs, whether it's testing or, you know, doing some administrative work. And, you know, so how, how is that going in all of our schools? And what amount of time do students who need more help spend in a reading intervention each, you know, over the course of a week? And how are parents involved in helping their child as well? And then, the seventh question would be, what additional resources does the reading specialist feel would help students read on or above grade level at the end of third grade? We talked today about, you know, also maybe the possibility of a, a reading convocation where, you know, we could bring all of the reading specialists together, you know, inspiring speaker, break up in, you know, to some groups to look at different issues that relate to things like dyslexia and, you know. I know we don't do the reading recovery program anymore because of expense, but what about maybe taking, you know, giving each school, 100 or so elementary schools, a, you know, one reading recovery person? Because they work one-on-one with a student. Your toughest cases, I think it's about $2,000 to do that. And it's a 22-week program. And to see whether or not that can make a difference. I think any student that we can help is going to go a long way to helping them be more successful in school and also in life. Imagine as we go through all the things that we have to deal with, you know, social security people, you know, your credit scores, voting, and all of these, you know, credit cards, everything, bank accounts, all of these things are really, really important. And we want, as I said, you know, every student to be able to be successful in all of our programs that we have in place because we have wonderful programs in place. We want students to be able to access those. But, you know, being able to read, I think, is a key to that. So just throw that out there and, you know, see if, and I'm not going to set any timelines because I know you're working on this sort of thing. But, you know, maybe if you could get back to us in, you know, a couple of months or so, just to let us know, you know, what you found about, you know, the state of reading in MCPS in our elementary schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, I'll be really quick. There was two things that I forgot to, and Ms. Sylvester's mention of the Blair reminded me of it. But two things, two other things that came up that I had questions about, for Dr. Zuckerman and Dan, if, before we have our work session, one thing was, I know you all had put together a list of projects that have been done in the different areas. You know, one of the things that came up was the, who's getting our funding in which areas of the county? So we had, I had asked a few, I think, a year or so ago. And I know that they put something together, but I was just curious if it's published up online? And if not, if it could be so people could look and see, you know, which projects have been done in which areas throughout the county? And then the other question that I had was, one of the things that came up was, as we hear frequently, especially around CIP, our security issues and security cameras. And I was wondering if I could get, before the work session, a, an estimate on what it would cost to put security cameras at the back doors of all of our schools and something, and ones that would show the portables? Because it's something that continues to come up. And I'm just curious as to what it would cost to finally get that knocked out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, comments?
So, I'd like to associate myself with Ms. Dixon's comments about Paint Branch's hospitality and cuisine program because she happened to bring me a takeout. And I had it for my luncheon. Thank you. And it was delicious, what great work they're doing there. It was something you'd be happy to pay for in a good restaurant. And also, Ms. Dixon, the issue of reading, I think, as we look at some data in a little while, is, is just so compelling. And as I shared with you not too long ago, that's kind of become a reinvigorated mission for me as I've looked at the data. And Dr. McKnight has already shared your questions with me. And we will prepare for you a profile of a reading, the reading specialists and the state of reading in Montgomery County. Because I think that will inform all of us as we do our work to support schools across the system. I couldn't help but notice as you were asking your questions, a good colleague and a person I enjoy talking with very much, Ms. Call, was sitting up there. And she was making notes and, you know, she, she does it every day in her class at Flor Singer, every single day. And so I just wanted to call her out for all the good work she does and as a reading teacher. And I also wanted to point out today that we have the Maryland State Department of Education Special Education Survey going on right now. So that's out with many of our parents. The deadline to complete the survey is Friday, May 15th. And we really would like to get as many parents complete that as possible. We also have a big anti-vaping body of work going on. We're going to have a symposium on vaping. And if you walk around this building, you will see "Let's Clear the Air" posters all over the place. This is a national health epidemic among the young. And something needs to happen on every level of our society, at the national level, the state level, and in our local level. And I'll call out Dr. Rochelle Rubin, Ms. Rochelle Rubin, and all the work she's been doing with her team, a very large team of people, and the teams in the school. Because it involves supervision. It involves education through the curriculum and through our school program. And it involves out-of-school-time engagement with families. And so, it is something that we need to really continue to blast out to every family so that there's really no excuse for someone not to know the dangers of vaping and the way it can become entangled with drug use and other things that it can be life-threatening and are life-threatening. So, also the Respect Fest is coming up. And that will be on March 29th, Sunday, March 29th, at the Wheaton Community Recreation Center. So that's always a really good activity across our community. So on Saturday, the March 28th, is the Anti-Vaping Symposium. And the very next day then is the Respect Fest about really helping our adolescents understand how to have healthy, good relationships with one another and in our community. And also, Rock Creek Forest, and I know other schools have this also, had their caring week. And we'd like to show you a video of that. And I know I was with the principal at, from Tilden the other night at a meeting, and she was so excited because she saw their video of their day of caring. So it's been going on all the way, all across the system. But we have the Rock Creek Forest video, and we'd like to show it real quick.
I promise to do my best to treat everyone fairly.
Simple acts of kindness was the theme at Rock Creek Forest Elementary School, where students and staff took part in the third annual Rock Creek Caring Week.
So about three years ago, we were looking to make a program that would include all of the students here. So I thought up this idea, and I'm the creator and inventor of Rock Creek Caring Week at Rock Creek Forest Elementary School. And this week is really about spreading kindness.
This is Mrs. Cohen, and I'm here this morning with some kindness confetti to read to all-
This program is really aligned nicely with the Be Well 365 Initiative that MCPS just took on. This initiative also includes everyone and reminds students that even though we're here to learn, and that's the most important thing, to learn and be safe, we also need to treat each other kindly.
Each day featured a different kindness activity.
Today, we're going to design a postcard to send to Mr. Henry's second-grade class. This week in Rock Creek Caring Week, our kids are very excited about spreading kindness to one another. They're highly motivated by bingo and kindness confetti. But we've talked a lot about how beyond Rock Creek Caring Week, we're going to keep up, you know, the practice of being kind and being helpful.
In lunch, if someone feels sad, I could sit next to them.
I made a nice note and left it in my friend's locker. And when they read it, they felt very happy, and I felt happy, too.
One new and exciting initiative included a wonderful story called Ishi.
And this story is about a little rock that's feeling a little bit defeated. And through the story, Ishi gives us simple tips for living in a world of happiness and sending the idea to us that happiness is contagious.
The takeaway for students is not just the kindness and respect they show at school, but also what they carry to their communities and beyond.
We're hoping people will kind of hear about it and do it at their own schools, and then the kindness will spread.
And also, just to remind students that there's many parts, many layers to school. Learning is one of them, and so is being respectful.
Since I started my term, these videos have been really, really good and incredibly powerful. So please thank your staff. It's really good.
Absolutely.
I'll be brief. I wanted to share that Dr. McKnight and I, we were in Annapolis on President's Day. We were there to speak in support on the current commission, HB, House Bill 1300. Yes, it was a day that was jam-packed with supporters. And I believe they picked the day because school was closed. There were a lot of students there, there were a lot of parents. And we were there for quite a few hours, but not as long as the, the committee. They were there, I think, until 7:00, and we were there till like almost 4:00, maybe. But it was definitely for a great cause, in support of a bill that we know will provide us great support and additional funding for not only our county, but throughout the state of Maryland. So just wanted to say thank you to Dr. McKnight for joining me. And there were other superintendents and county executives. Our very own county executive was there as well. So it was a good day. I also had the opportunity to go to our retirees' luncheon. So they hold one quarterly. And, you know, I was sitting there and some, I can't remember the speaker's name, but they were talking about the toolkits. And they talked about how long they had been doing the toolkits for our kindergarteners, our Title I schools. And when I got up there to speak, I just acknowledged them for their support of our school system. Although they're retired, they still do a lot to support our kids. And I had to get up there and say, you know what? My daughter was a recipient of one of those toolkits, and that was 11 years ago. So that made me kind of reflect back on how that support just really extended far and wide, and that we appreciate all that they continue to do for our students, even though they're retired. It seemed like they're probably busier now than what they were when they were in the school system. So just thank them for their work. On Friday, I was able to go to Cabin John Middle School. I was invited by one of the parents there to be on their panel for Black History Month. It was myself, Councilmember Jawando, and our Chief of Police, Marcus Jones, along with a couple of students from Wooton and Churchill. The students, there were about three students on the panel. They represented the Minority Scholars Program and their Black Student Councils. And their theme was celebrating leadership, past, present, and the future. And so I just acknowledged Ms. Odessa Shannon, being the first African-American to not only serve on the school board, but just being the first African-American woman. And just how, as leaders, not only is it impactful for us to be inspiring, to be, to inspire others, but also just to remain steadfast in your dreams and your goals. And just acknowledging that Ms. Shannon has been doing this work around making sure that the opportunity gaps for Black and African-American students, that we're working to close it, that she's been doing this work for over 40 years. And she still continues to do that work, although she's not able to be as mobile as she, as she has been in the past. And so, just wanted to acknowledge her and thank her for all of her work here in Montgomery County, not just in the month of February, just, but every day. Yeah.
Heard from Ms. Shannon, Odessa Shannon, yesterday. So she's still, from her-
Right.
Well, she's at home.
I know, right.
And she's still writing to us and still concerned.
Yeah, so she's, she does, she sends emails, and they're very encouraging. And so I really appreciate her still thinking about others, still thinking about our county. Ms. Dixon?
Yeah, so I wanted to just thank you, Shebra, for going all over the place and representing the Board of Ed, you know? Every time, you know, I look up, I see something on Twitter, you're there. And we really do appreciate that. And Dr. Doc, I don't know how you do it. You also are always all over the place, going here, going there. You guys have some kind of energy, I think, but, you know.
I don't like to miss all the good things that are happening in the schools.
Yeah, there are wonderful things happening.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think tomorrow morning, there will be an African-American history program at the county council. So, General, he's now General, Charles McGee, who is Tuskegee Airmen, is going to be honored by the council. In fact, I think he was honored at the State of the Union. And I don't mind saying, he is the one who should have received the Presidential Medal of Freedom instead of the person who did, whose I won't name. But in any case, you know, I look forward to that tomorrow. He's 100, 102, is it?
He's over 100, yes. I'll be there with you.
He also participated in the coin toss at the Super Bowl.
Yes, yes, right, right.
He should do, yes.
I have met him a couple of times when he had come to NJROTC luncheons when I was at Paint Branch with the NJRCT. But he's, he's a great man. He really is.
Yes, I'm glad he's getting his flowers while he's still here. He was also acknowledged at the Martin Luther King Breakfast by members of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, because he's a member of the fraternity. So, no, definitely looking forward to that presentation tomorrow. So I want to, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, do we have any updates from committee chairs? Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes, so the Policy Management Committee met last week. We did not make any further changes to policy JEE, change of school assignment. So it will go back out for public comment. We did adopt, make tentative recommendations that we're sending to the board. One regards academic eligibility for sports and other extracurricular activities. That will be coming to the board soon because our goal is to have it, have final action this spring so that it will be in place, any changes will be in place next year. There, let's see, we are sending back to the board legal services and a number of other policies. And we adopted a work plan for this coming year. So we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Okay, so seeing no other lights, we can move on to the next item, which is item number six, item of legislation. Ms.
Good evening and thank you for having me. I did print a couple of extra copies of the whole packet in case anybody needed a hard copy. I'll leave them with Victoria in case anybody wants to take a look. So as you know, it's been a very busy legislative session. We are now past the halfway point in terms of bills being dropped. So the amount of bills should slow down. However, we have 16 bills tonight that I'd like to draw your attention to. That is in Attachment A that I'm going to ask for your positions on. Again, we tried to organize them to kind of keep the content together. So I'll go through them. I'll give you the recommended position from the staff. And if you have questions, please let me know. So the first one is about civil immunity for educators. So this, this bill says that a staff member is not liable for personal injury if they're breaking up a fight between students. This, this legislation actually already exists. And so whenever anything already exists, we try to give you all the places you can see the education articles of where this exists. And we try to say, we don't want to add more legislation and regulation on top of regulation that already exists. So the recommendation is to oppose this because, because it already exists. However, I did want to draw your attention to the, to the last paragraph on page two for this bill that says that if you were interested in supporting with an amendment, one amendment to consider might be to limit the liability for school districts. So this is about individual school employees, a case that we already have protection for. But the recommendation overall is to oppose this bill.
Is there a motion? Been moved and seconded. All in favor. And that is unanimous.
Okay, I'm going to keep going on page two, Employment Discrimination. So this changes the definition of an, of an employee specifically to include an elected public official. So it would include board members. However, we already have this language in policy ACH. So we support this as it's already in line with what we're doing.
Move to support. Been moved and seconded. All in favor. And that is unanimous.
Okay, the next bill on page three, House Bill 1008. So this is the, the much needed bill to correct House Bill 486 from last year. So we've had a number of discussions about 486, the intent of which we absolutely support, which is to provide further background checks for those who are going to be in contact with minors to make sure that no sexual predators are able to, to teach in our school system. However, there were some complications around that bill. It was requiring a full look back for your whole life. This would say only 10 years. So that, that was a little more reasonable than trying to find the work records from further behind. Also, this bill says that we can hire folks under certain circumstances while we're doing the background check. So there's lots of protections in place, but it would allow us, right now, we can't hire anybody. So that's caused a backlog in all of the school systems. And it clarifies what direct contact with minors means, down to a more educational understanding of what that is. So we are supporting with an amendment. The only amendment was, one thing that we have, that we have asked for is to clarify what we mean by contracting agency. And so you can see here, we give the definition of contracting agency from the Family Law article. And we're asking that the legislators use the same definition. So the request is to support with amendment.
Move to support with amendments. Been moved and seconded. All in favor. And that is unanimous.
Okay, the next bill, House Bill 1074. This is a bill, so currently, it is prohibited and an illegal subject of bargaining to, to bargain about class size. And this bill would repeal that prohibition. However, as our, as our write-up explains, that negotiating class size is not just about teachers and it's not just about the time that teachers take, but it's also about the appropriate grouping of students and, and the, it says one of the many factors that need to be considered when staffing schools and assigning students. We give some examples here. So if you have a class and you have, you're one student over whatever those guidelines are, do you, do you put that student in another class even though that might not be the best class for them? Or do you hire another teacher? And so the idea was that this is more complicated than just a teacher workload issue. It's a local autonomy issue and it's an issue of concern, excuse me, that we feel school systems should have the ability to continue to determine. So the recommendation is to oppose.
Move to oppose. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor. Do you need to get some water?
Okay, the next one is Public School Whistleblower Protection Act. So similar to the one, two bills ago, the, we actually had a law in place that said that public school teachers are covered by the Whistleblower Protection, Protection Act. The courts overruled that and said that they needed to go through the administrative process within a school system. This would go back and turn it over again and say that they do not have to go through the administrative process. And so our recommendation is to, is to continue to oppose this and support, because we support the notion that if, if an employee, we want them to be able to bring it to us and give us the opportunity to fix the problem before they, they just go straight to a federal agency. Dr. Smith?
I was just going to add that when you talk about the, when you talk about the administrative recourse, you're talking about the internal workings of the school system, then you're talking about appealing to the Board of Education, talking about appealing to the State Board of Education. It's a very clear pathway in the state of Maryland for recourse. And what this says is that that would have to be followed prior to taking civil, bringing civil litigation against the school system. So just.
So the recommendation is to oppose that.
I'm sorry, can you just restate? So the, the legislation proposes what?
So the, in 2017, the law was passed that says public school employees are, are covered under the Whistleblower Act. That went all the way up to the, through the court system. And in the Court of Appeals, it held that existing whistleblower laws did not apply to public school employees. So it was an MCPS case that went through the state courts that came back and said, it does not apply. This law would make it apply again, but the, the caveat within the law isn't just that it applies, it allows them to skip the administrative process, the pathway that we've already put in place for handling some of these concerns. So it would increase the amount of litigation because there would be no obligation for someone to go through the administrative system that Dr. Smith was just discussing.
Through the administration of the school system, through the local board, through the state board, and then you get the opportunity to bring forth civil litigation. And this law would not.
They would just be able to go straight to civil litigation under this law.
Okay, so there's no opportunities for amendments that would have them follow our process so that they would be protected under the?
So that's within the purview of the board. If you would like to support with an amendment and add an amendment, we can, we can discuss that. That, this is just the recommendation that came from our staff who looked at this and said, you know, this, we are kind of, we are the case that this was originally determined. And now they, because they didn't win the case, there's legislation trying to overturn what the courts have decided.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if we could look at some amendments to this because, I mean, not just that the case that went through the courts was ours, but also, you know, I think all of us nationally are more, have heightened awareness about whistleblowers and wanting to protect them. And they, it's important, so.
So if you're comfortable, I can put this bill on hold and we'll go back to the staff and we'll work on some amendment language and I'll bring it back at the next board meeting as a returning bill.
I think I, I mean, for me, that's, I would feel more comfortable with it.
The typical language is that you've exhausted your administrative remedies. And that was the staff's concern about this, is that that process is clearly in place in Maryland. And whether it's the local board or the state board can often provide the solution without civil litigation. So we can do that.
Okay. So next is HB 1092. So this is a similar example of a rule being turned, overturned. And so there's clearly some arguing around this. We used to post all of our financial data payment disclosures on our website. A bill was passed last year that said you don't have to have it on your individual website as long as you link to the state website where all of that is. This bill would revert back. So it would overrule the bill that was passed last year and say, we all need to have it on our website. We smartly didn't remove it from our website. We still have it. Really, it doesn't make any difference to us. We're, we are, try to be very transparent. And so we recommend supporting this bill.
Move to support. Been moved and seconded. All in favor. And that is unanimous.
So the next school, Public School Applicants for Employment Race and Gender Information. So this would require?
I'm sorry, I really apologize. Just back on that last one. I just wanted to clarify one thing. It reads the, that they are getting at least $25,000 from, from the boards. But it's technically coming from the school systems, correct? I mean, I know we approved the budget, but it's not.
So.
I'm just, I just want to clarify the, when this goes in or what would it as we do now?
It's, it's the same as what, well, it's the same as what we did before last year, which technically we continue to do because it wasn't, it didn't prohibit us from continuing to post it. So we post, and if I'm, if I'm wrong.
So that's just our consent items above $25,000?
Above $25,000, correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, House Bill 1347. So this bill would require applicants to give their race and gender when they're applying. And so the reason for this is that they're looking at, they're actually trying to look at equity in hiring practices. However, it is currently not required in any job that you have to identify your race and/or your gender. So we talked about this and we considered supporting with an amendment and saying, well, if they provide the information willingly, we could then tally the results. However, there was a strong concern, especially from our legal team, that this would make people feel like they had to give their race and gender. And, and we don't agree that anybody should have to do that. So the recommendation is to oppose.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor. And that is unanimous.
Okay, the next bill, House Bill 839 on the middle of page seven. This is the Labor and Employment Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. So this would create a family leave program for individuals who work over 680 hours in a 12-month period. It would create a new tax on the system, on all systems, but on our system as well. The estimated impact is at least around $4 million to create this extra fund. So the, there isn't a lot of information about exactly how this would work and when it would come into effect. And so we know already that there's a pretty, a pretty stark fiscal impact. And so the recommendation is to oppose.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
I mean, Judy just made a motion. I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. You know, I, I guess I have to say, you know, there is good in family and medical leave insurance programs. I mean, the fiscal impact would be significant for us.
Right. And I would add, there's an additional fiscal impact for actually setting up the system. So that's just the money, the tax that we believe we would have to put in is the $4 million. Then there's additional to set up the system itself, determine how claims are filed, who collects those claims, who processes them, how all of that works.
Does this put more or less of a burden on our employees in general?
It puts more of a burden on the staff employees. It may potentially benefit individuals who work only 680 hours. But the financial impact is pretty large.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor. That's unanimous.
Okay, on page eight, this is electric retractable room partitions. So these are, when you have a big room and the, the thing that comes across to close the room, we have them in gymnasiums in our schools. Unfortunately, this bill came about because of a student passing away in Virginia that got squished between the partitions. And so we are already under, under the process of, of reviewing what partitions we have, where we have them, and what we need to do. All new construction is being made with the sensors that are created here. However, we have about 100 schools that have partitions that do not have the sensor, but they are, they work by having two keys. So there has to be two individuals entering two keys and if either one is pulled at any time. And so we support this. We agree that it's really important that kids not be involved. And we actually asked for a couple of amendments, one which is to put in the process that we use, so it doesn't speak at all about the two-key way. And so we asked if we could continue to use the, the two-key mechanism while we are, because if not, we'd have to shut down all of the areas where, where these partitions exist right now. And also added an amendment that says, do not allow students to operate these. So that may sound kind of like common sense, but that's not in the legislation. And when our folks looked at it, said, this is a really important point of how we keep kids safe. We don't let them anywhere near it. So the recommendation is to support with an amendment.
Move to support with an amendment. Been moved and seconded. All in favor. That is unanimous.
Okay, the next bill is about playground and athletic field surfaces. So this is about, there is a fund called the Program Open Space Fund. And currently, it can be used for maintenance and upkeep of certain grass athletic fields and drainage systems owned on, on land owned by the state. So we use those funds to upkeep our, our fields and our playgrounds. This bill would say that we could no longer use those funds on anything with synthetic athletic fields. And it prohibits the funds to be applied towards the replacement of any current synthetic fields. Our biggest concern about this is that actually playgrounds that have synthetic turf under them and synthetic materials are ADA accessible. Those are what the ADA recommends. So when we build a playground for children who have special needs, we require these materials in order to, in order to build those playgrounds and make them safe and wheelchair accessible. And so we agree with being able to use the funds for the upkeep of these fields. However, we would request that the language about it being synthetic be removed so that we could continue to use these funds to upgrade our playgrounds that are specifically for ADA students. And so the recommendation is to support with an amendment.
I just want to add, you know, up at Longview School, the playground does have, you know, a surface that it makes it accessible. And, you know, the driving force at Somerset Elementary in raising the money for the artificial turf on the Somerset Field, and she's been active about, you know, the, that's a playground is, because it's a mulch surface, the, the woman who led that charge, her son has spina bifida and is in a wheelchair. And, you know, it was pretty moving to me in meeting with her and working with her that it, it wasn't just a desire to have plastic grass or, you know, but that the, her son was not able to access, access the field, not even able to get close to the playground equipment where his friends are, yet he is able to fully function at Somerset at the time. I think he's now in middle school. And, you know, it was quite compelling to me. So I move to support with an amendment.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor. And that is unanimous.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. On the same page, page 10, House Bill 1295. This is school district energy use. So this requires that the Interagency Commission on School Construction, so the IAC that you guys have heard lots about, only approves a public school construction project for a school district that has a certain district energy policy. So the first thing I want to say is that we actually do a lot of this work already. You can kind of see under the bullets here, all of the environmentally friendly energy use things that we're working on. But this would say that the IAC has the ability to not approve a school construction project if they, if, for the purposes of a district energy policy that does not appear relevant to the overall intent. So essentially, it would give the IAC control, more control than it has now, based around allowing them to decide what the most energy efficient things are in a school building. And we feel that we should retain that, that ability and that we are doing this work. So it was to support with an amendment. And the amendment would say, we agree that there should be a district energy policy. We have one. We agree that we should be looking at them every time we're building new schools or refinishing other schools. However, we don't think the IAC should have the ability to approve. So it's the support with amendment.
Move to support with an amendment.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded.
I also want to suggest, I mean, we have, I mean, that maybe, you know, at some point with our delegation, we do a meeting about the environmental efforts that we have here in Montgomery County. They may not all be aware of, or, you know, at this point, obviously they're busy. But, you know, really to make available our staff to explain to them what we're doing, but at some later.
With that, something we can do. We actually are working on a meeting about how we make some of the decisions we make around building stuff. And so it might be for our, some of our delegation members who are interested. So we may be able to just build that into that meeting as well.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Okay, the next bill is House Bill 1422, Public School Redistricting Community Advisory Committees. This bill would establish a community advisory for any time that there is a decision to redistrict. So every time you guys made a decision about, we're building a new school and we need to determine who's going to go to that school, you would have to have this advisory board. And so our staff looked at this and talked to the sponsor about this bill, and we really support the intent, but the format of having these advisory committees actually would take us backwards from the work that you all do now. So currently, we have a much wider advisory participation, and so this bill would decrease that participation and not allow as many people to have an input as they do now. And so the recommendation is to oppose.
Move to strongly oppose? And I just, I just want to add, you know, I think our, in any boundary decision, there are going to be some people who are very unhappy with the ultimate decision. I can hardly remember a time that everybody jumped up and down and said, yay, you're changing our boundaries. So, but all of us are from, live in different parts of the county. None of us are next-door neighbors. We also understand the complexities, the bigger issues with our schools. And I participated as a cluster coordinator in a boundary decision years and years ago when we had boundary advisory committees that were structured in a very different way that limited participation from the greater community in the process. Is our process perfect? No. We're open to feedback and, you know, ever-evolving and making it better, but this is not the way to do it.
It's been moved, Ms.?
I just wanted to clarify, the board would have ultimate final say, right? This would just be like a recommendation type of committee?
Correct. So it would require this creation of a stakeholder group, which it would be the board's responsibility to make sure that stakeholder group was created. It's specific about the composition. And then that board has to be given time to give you their recommendations.
It also, I mean, it spells out six parents, four teachers, and one board member. And I have to say, you know, like, which board member? I think that gives someone, some board undue influence in the process. So, I mean, I think all of us take all the facts and, I mean, everybody did their due diligence on the Clarksburg Seneca Valley. We all went up there. Carla went separately, but drove through, and so I have problems with the way this is constructed.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? To oppose, yes. So that's Ms. Sevestry, Dr. Daca, Mrs. O'Neil, Mrs. Evans, Ms. Dixon, and Mr. Tenby, all opposed? Mrs. Mondroski?
It's not so much that I'm opposed. I don't, I agree with-
Are you opposing?
Aspect of the wording of them dictating who's on it, but I don't have a general opposition to having advisory groups.
So are you raising your hand or not? What are you doing?
I'm not raising my hand.
So that is opposed. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. House Bill 1451, on the bottom of page 11, school bus purchasing zero emission vehicles. So as you remember, there was a bill passed last year that got gutted at the last moment and became just a pilot. This brings the original bill back. It says that by 2026, all school buses must be electric. And so I want to start by saying, our staff actually support this concept, and we are working on, and you can kind of see it in our notes, a business model that would be cost-neutral. So there is some conversations and some meetings going on to look at how do we do this. However, also, a electric school bus is $200,000 more than a regular school bus, so the upfront costs are very high. And additionally, there's a very good question as to whether the bus-making industry could actually create enough buses if this was passed in order for everybody to have all electric buses by 2026. And so we don't think that they could realistically, so then what happens if the law passes and everybody has to have it and there aren't enough? And so the recommendation is to oppose this, not necessarily because we don't, we don't agree with the intent, but that we should be able to negotiate on our own how we're going to do this.
Move to oppose? We, is there a second?
I'm second.
We also had a lengthy discussion with Todd about the infrastructure in our bus depots. And I think only one of our bus depots had the ability to do the charging stations at this time, so.
Right, and the business model that they're looking at would be financially neutral and would include those things. And so if this bill passed, we wouldn't necessarily be able to continue to pursue that because we would be bound by these regulations by this certain time. So.
Have you spoken to the sponsors and what do they have to say?
Yes, and the sponsor actually has been in on the meetings with the, with the business that we've been talking to about, about how to do this, and is very, he found the company and is very much a part of the conversations. I think he feels that it can be done faster than we feel it can be done. It's right now, that company is doing it only in one small town in Massachusetts. So they have a number of other places that they're working on making this model work, but I think our county folks and our school system folks are continuing to get more information before they make a decision around that, and I think the delegate would like to move it a little faster.
And the funding aspect of it?
That's a very large concern. There is no funding attached to this.
Okay.
So I forgot that fast. Was it moved and seconded?
It was-
Okay, okay. So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay.
Okay, the next one is about solar panels. So I know you guys have received a number of comments from students as well about solar panels. Again, this is one where we do not, we support the concept, absolutely. However, there are already some provisions around what are on our school roofs, one of which is green funding. So there are some initiatives where we're growing things on our roofs. Also statewide, there are stormwater drainage systems that must be in place. So this bill really is in direct conflict with some regulations that already exist. And so our, we want to support the concept. We like the idea. We're working on solar panels as well. However, we need some amendments around this to discuss the fact that stormwater drainage and green roofs are, need to be considered as well. So it's a support with an amendment, and the amendment is around considering the other regulations that already exist and figuring out how they could work together.
Move to support with an amendment? And I just want to add, several years ago, we attempted to, or we had interest in putting some large solar panels on some of our vacant school sites, and neighbors went nuts over that idea. I mean, we wanted to, you know, in addition to doing solar panels on roofs, which I think we have like 11, 17, so, I forget. We have some schools with, but we were attempting to go further, and the community backlash was tremendous.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Okay, the next one is a Public Information Act bill. As you know, there were a number of bills this year around public information acts and how we respond to them. This one is specifically about distribution list. So although we already, if we, if somebody requests a PIA for a distribution list, we take out the phone numbers, emails, addresses, things of that nature. That's what this bill says that we have the right to do. We are already doing that under FERPA, the Federal Education Rights to Privacy Act. However, this would solidify it and make us feel a little better about the fact that we're doing that. So we support this legislation. Again, it kind of gives us more validation for the decisions that we're making under FERPA. So the recommendation is support.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Okay, and the last bill to talk to you about has a lot of information here, but this is the bill that I'm bringing back from the last meeting. So at the last meeting, we talked about this bill, the Juvenile Law Child Interrogation Protection Act. So this is one where it's about when they have to notify the parents if they're going to interrogate a child. And so when we talked about it at the last meeting, we had recommended supporting with an amendment, and the amendment language, excuse me, was that the, unless there was an imminent danger, and there was a concern at the board about what did imminent danger mean, and could that be subjectively, Ms. Mondroski specifically asked, can that be subjectively construed? And so we went back and we talked with our legal team, and they pulled for us. So on the top of page 14, it is in bold, based on our own policies and the Code of Maryland Regulations, imminent danger is defined, and it is what it is defined as right here. An imminent threat is one in which the person or situation appears to pose a clear and immediate threat of serious violence that requires containment and action to protect identified or identifiable targets, and may also exhibit other concerning behavior that require intervention. An imminent threat also may involve a parallel school disciplinary process. So we are still putting forward the recommendation of support with amendment, our amendment being that we agree that you should not, you shouldn't have to notify the parents before you interrogate the child unless there is imminent danger.
Move to support with an amendment?
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Okay, and that is the end of Attachment A and the bills that you had to vote on. You do have Attachment B, which are bills that fall under the legislative annual priorities. If anybody wants to pull those out, please let me know. And the final one, Attachment C, these are bills that are really just FYIs for you. They may have something to do with education. They may have, often they're about the State Department of Education, and so we don't weigh in on those, but I'd like you to know that they exist in case you have any questions. So with that, I will see you guys in two weeks. That was perfect.
Quick question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do you testify to these things, or do you just submit written testimony?
I submit written testimony on your behalf. I do not testify.
Why don't we actually testify? Because I think it's powerful for us to be able to have a voice there and answer questions if it's asked at the table.
So for some, we are, we will testify if they give us enough notice?
So, so for-
But you're there almost every day.
Right, so, so far, only board members testify. I do not testify on your behalf because I'm only staff, and so I submit the testimony and I answer questions for them, but I do not, that's something we can, we can talk about offline in terms of the, the structure of the position. But currently, if there is a bill that, that we either are asked to testify on or we feel that we need to testify, we ask a board member or we ask senior staff to come and discuss the bill.
Well, I think we should have that conversation because-
We can, we can have it offline, yeah.
You're there and, you know, it just makes much more sense for you to be able to answer questions.
But does every, I think every LEA has a legislative analyst. If all of them were testifying, they probably wouldn't get in.
So some of them do and some of them don't. It depends on the structure of their school board and how their school board feels. Lots of them testify on local bills. Many of them do exactly, the larger school systems, Baltimore City and Anne Arundel, do exactly what we do, which is we bring in a special person if we want someone to testify. Other than that, they just submit written testimony as well.
Well, and you also meet with, you know, delegates and senators individually and lobbying them and that sort of thing as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you are providing to all of our delegates and senators a summary of our positions on all the bills?
Correct. So before the board meetings, so when I sent all of your materials last week, I sent a message to all of the delegates with a list of bills we would be discussing today. So not with positions, just the list of bills themselves. After this meeting, that now that the positions have been determined, we send out a full summary to them with the positions that you took on all of these bills, and we submit written testimony on all the bills that we've taken a position on.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, now I'll see you in two weeks.
Right. And so at this time, the board will take a recess. It is 7:23, and we will come back at 7:43. I said 7:43. We can make it 7:45, just to be an even number, right? I was being exact.
I forgot about her.
I'd be terrified, call that her and she would be sitting there. Here she comes.
Good evening and welcome back. We are back from our recess. And I wanted, before we go further, I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Wolf. She's not here today. She's under the weather, so we hope she's feeling better and she comes back quickly to us. At this time, we will move to item eight on Agenda. Dr. Smith?
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to come to the board for our mid-year snapshot of how our students are doing. This is now, will be the second time we've presented the mid-year snapshot. We spent the sixteen, seventeen year developing the evidence of learning. We spent the seventeen, eighteen year continuing to build it out. And then last year, we refined it more. We're continuing to refine it. And so tonight, we're going to present a snapshot of where we think the students are as they transition from second to third grade, from fifth to sixth grade, from eighth to ninth grade, and then provide you with some updates on our students as they finish high school and what it's looking like for them. We typically would present graduation data tonight, but the state board hasn't released it yet. So we'll send that to you separately, but we didn't want to hold this information up as we had to last spring because we just are going to go forward. Tonight, you're going to see some red. You're going to see the implementation dip of a new curriculum. You're going to see, as we continue to work, about how we build the very strongest possible foundation. Back to our earlier conversation when Ms. Dixon read her questions and her wanderings and ponderings about reading, about how we build the strongest possible foundation in elementary and middle school. And then we're going to see some information on third grade reading. And we're going to see some information about how our students finish their high school career. And I think it's very encouraging because what we've got to always remember is it's our job to build that literacy and mathematics foundation. And they need to be able to finish strong and then go out into the world and do what they want to do. And so there's some very encouraging data tonight about our students as they complete high school and really are prepared for the options and opportunities that exist. And so Dr. McKnight is going to lead us through this cross-functional team of individuals in front of you and talk about the work and how we'll continue to refine the work as we go forward. Dr. McKnight?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. So the 2018 and 2019 Evidence of Learning End of the Year Performance Data is for students in grades two, five, eight, eleven. And that was shared with you in September, this past September of 2019. So these data are considered, data points to really talk about the readiness performance data and provide information on how well our students are prepared to advance to the next level. Students are considered prepared when they meet two out of three of the measures. The three measures are classroom, district, and external measures. So as a part of this evening's presentation, central services and school staff will discuss transition data for grades three, six, nine, and twelve students and how the data are being used for planning and to ensure student success moving forward. Additionally, central services staff will share reading levels for grades three students, reading levels for current grade two students, and college and career readiness for the class of 2020. So staff will also discuss how central services uses this information to provide coordinated services and supports to schools to help improve student academic achievement and social emotional well-being. So with that, will we give you some data just to look over and discuss this evening? Most importantly, we look forward to sharing some examples of how we're utilizing that data already and will continue to do so through our three measures. And so with that, I'll turn things over to Ms. Dyson, the Associate Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here tonight. And so just before we get started, I wanted to orient you a little bit to the evidence of learning. So Dr. McKnight spoke about the different measures, classroom, district, and external. So I just want to name the categories in those measures so you'll get a better understanding as we move forward of the data presented. So classroom measures are report card grades. District measures are assessments that are aligned to the curriculum. And then external measures are our state assessments or nationally normed assessments. So our goal tonight, our goal always is for students to meet two or three of those measures as indicated tonight in the overall category on the slides. In other words, the percent you'll see will represent the overall numbers of students who are meeting two or three measures within those categories. So we're going to start with the first data slide. Yep, one more. All right. So on this slide, we see the percentages for students in our transitions in grades of three, six, and nine. You will notice that sixty-four point five percent of our students in literacy in grade three met two or three measures. In grade six, sixty-two point three percent met two or three measures. And then in grade nine, eighty-two point six percent met two or three measures. Just want to remind you, as Dr. Smith and Dr. McKnight indicated, as we transition into a new curriculum and new assessments, you will see, so you will notice some red. Those assessments are more rigorous. The standards that have been set are higher than our normal standards because we want students to access on-grade level curriculum. Okay? So you'll see that throughout, and then we'll answer questions towards the end. So we're going to start with literacy transition non-farms, white Asians and all other students. You'll see here, our lowest band is at grade six. Eighty-four point eight percent of our students met two or three measures, followed by our grade three and grade nine ending at ninety-four point eight percent meeting two or three measures. If we transition to literacy non-farms, black or African-American students, you'll see the range is from sixty-three point eight to eighty-one point one percent of students meeting two of three measures. And for our non-farms, Hispanic Latino students in literacy, fifty-seven point three in sixth grade percent of our students are meeting two or three measures, sixty-one point five percent at third, and then we end at ninth grade, seventy-five point eight percent meeting two or three measures. For literacy transition farms, white Asians and all other student groups. Here, we want to reiterate again, we want to reiterate again the shift to on-grade level text, higher expectations for students and district and external measures. You may also be wondering about grade nine. The external measure for grade nine is on-track for graduation and eligibility with a grade of a D. Okay? So whereas our classroom measure expectation is a grade C. So on-track for grade, for grade nine, on-track for graduation and eligibility are the measures that we use to meet the external measure.
Ms. Dyson, if I may. So students are earning their credits and they are remaining eligible for extracurricular programming. That has been a long-used measure in Montgomery County and high schools across the country. One of the challenges of that measure is it's a relatively low standard, as Ms. Dyson said, to earn the grade of D in that class, whereas in their classroom measure, they have to earn a C or higher. So you can see the seven percent difference there in students. And, you know, our goal is that our students would meet all three measures ultimately, but at least two of them.
So we see at, oh, sorry. Did I go over that?
No.
Okay. Literacy transition farms, black or African-American students. We'll see at sixth grade, we started forty-two point six percent of students meeting two or three measures, and we go up to sixty-seven point nine in grade nine. Literacy transition farms, Hispanic Latino students, thirty point six percent in grade six, up to sixty-eight point six percent meeting two or three measures. Again, we have new curriculum and new assessments, so we're going to have to do some standard setting with our assessments to ensure we're set at the right level for students to achieve. All right. Next, we're going to move to reading on grade level. One area of interest is students reading on grade level. We heard you tonight, Ms. Dixon, talk so eloquently about, impassionately about the importance of reading. So we're going to present the percent of current.
I want to just mention, I was only talking about the state MCAP. Okay?
Yeah, so we're going to share some of that data as well.
I'm going to show that to you right now.
Right now, yep. We will present the percent of current grade three students who met the expected instructional reading level on MAP reading fluency at the end of grade two, 2018, 2019. Also included is the performance of students on MCAP 2018, 2019. So just a little bit about MAP reading fluency. It assesses foundational reading skills that includes phonemic awareness, decoding, literal comprehension, that's the meaning of the passage, and their cadence. So the inflection and intonation as they're reading. So of our current grade three students who had MAP reading fluency data last year, seventy-five percent met or exceeded the end-of-year grade two grade-level expectation. In examining the data by the focus groups, we see that in most groups, the majority of students are meeting the grade-level expectation at the end of grade two. We do recognize, though, there is more work we need to do for our students impacted by poverty, particularly our Hispanic and Latino students. Here, we present the performance of grade three students in 2018, 2019 on the MCAP. Sixty-nine point two percent of all students met a three, four, or five during this administration of MCAP. So at this time, we do not have specific measure, a specific measure that explores on-grade level reading. But we do know the state assessment provides us this information. Additionally, the assessment measures writing and comprehension. And this provides some great insight into how our students are performing at the end of grade three as it relates to meeting grade-level expectations.
Ms. Dyson, thing is important to note, this will be the very last administration, this data you're looking at, of this particular assessment. So the state will be looking at that new assessment. So when we come back to you in September, we're going to bring you a performance of this year's grade three students, but it won't be a state test because we will not have that data back as we typically do in July of this year. It's also important to note that when we saw that red earlier in those transition data, as Ms. Dyson said so well, it's all about where you set the standard. And so right now, the state is struggling with what the appropriate standard is. It was originally three, which is the bottom of the yellow, between the yellow and the orange. Then, in a desire to be more rigorous, they moved it to four. Now they're really looking back and saying, when we do our standard setting, it probably is more appropriate at three, not because we want to be easy or less rigorous, but the whole goal is to say, is this student at a threshold point where he or she can be successful as a reader? And that's different than being a student who's in accelerated or enriched programming, or a student who is reading well above grade level. Finding that exact spot is one of the biggest challenges that our folks in front of you have to when they work with schools. And so I just want to point that out, that this is still going to change, but it is very, very useful, one set of very useful information of all the information we have.
I want to add to this before we move on to talk about the next piece. Just a reminder that our audit revealed some really critical information, particularly at the elementary level. They noted that we spent a significant amount of time in what we call guided reading instruction, which is a piece of the small group reading instruction. And in that time, teachers were providing students or meeting students where they were academically. So if a student was in fifth grade reading at a third grade level, that's where they provided the instruction. And our audit said very clearly, we need to ensure that all of our students have instruction at the grade level every single day and in addition to providing them some interventions that might be a little bit lower than their reading level if necessary. So that was a large piece of information that we received from the audit. And the other one was that almost seventy percent of our elementary and middle school teachers were not using the curriculum. They were either creating their own resources or looking for other resources online or what have you, which meant there was a lot of inconsistency in terms of what was delivered. And again, can't guarantee that they are getting grade-level resources. And so we wanted to ensure, obviously with the purchase of the new curriculum, that we purchased a curriculum that was aligned to the standards at the grade level or higher. And so our teachers are working with that. And so when you asked a question earlier today about the state of literacy, that's where we are right now. We are addressing for teachers this real challenge around how do I meet the needs of all of my learners who may not be on grade level and still continue to provide that high-level rigor? And so that's some of the red that you're seeing in our grades three and six. So I want to continue. I know we've talked and heard earlier today about how important reading on grade level by grade three is. And so I want to talk about what we are doing in the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Programs in collaboration with the Office of Special Education. We are partnering to provide, for the first time, a systematic approach to interventions in the district. And instead of every school selecting whatever they want to select, we have really worked together to provide schools with specific interventions and giving them more guidance. And so we talk about instruction in three tiers, the first being good first instruction. That is where we want to see all of our students and all of our teachers focusing the majority of their time is high-quality planning at the grade level for all of our students, adjusting, or we call it scaffolding, for students who might need specific needs with that instruction. And if we do that well, eighty to eighty-five percent of our students should be reading at the proficient level with that good first instruction. So when we look at our twenty to fifteen percent who may need some reteaching, that's where we look at the tier two. And tier two says, I'm going to take my informal reading data. I'm going to go back and plan and adjust using the same core materials that I have, that same core curriculum. And from there, we should see another percentage of students who are demonstrating that proficiency. But you're going to have about five percent that still might be struggling. And that's where we move into the tier three. And our tier three interventions, again, we purchase between our offices, and they are evidence-based, approved by MCPS and also by the state. And so we have provided our schools with specific intervention resources. And tier three is really designated, and you asked a question earlier today, we want to make sure students have a specific amount of time. It can be fifteen minutes, it can be thirty minutes, it might be daily, it might be a few times a week, but that it is planned between the teacher, the administrator, and the parent. And so you asked about parent involvement with intervention, so that's really critical. And that it doesn't take place throughout the entire school year, but there's a designated amount of time that we're going to monitor the student to see if they're making progress. Could be twelve weeks or eight weeks. And so that is what a tier three intervention looks like. So if we go to the next slide, again, Kevin Lowndes and I have been working together to identify schools through Kerwin Commission money. And so we have sixty-four schools that we've provided additional parent educator support and staffing to. And we have been training those parent educators throughout the summertime and continue through the school year. Orton Gillingham, you may have heard of, is a program that we're using, really great reading, are two of the main interventions that we're using for literacy. And then we also have mathematics interventions. We have more, but those are the main areas where we're really focusing. You can see there that nine hundred eighty-six students between those schools, between kindergarten and grade two, are receiving some type of intervention. Again, we really are trying to tailor it to the needs of each individual student. So some may be getting individual services, others may be in small groups. Some may be getting it within the classroom, kind of pulled to the side. Others may be actually going to another room for that intervention. And again, we want to make sure that we're monitoring how our students are doing. So we actually purchased a tool through Performance Matters where our parent educators, as they're getting trained, are also learning how to use this tool so that we can document how our students are doing at the school level and at the district level. So we really want to make sure. So we really want to make sure that our students are leaving grade-two really strong. And we're seeing some good results. We're gonna come back to you in a few weeks to talk about the blueprint for Maryland Education, is that what it's called?
Maryland's.
Maryland's. Blueprint.
From Maryland's.
There you go. That. And so we will share with you some of the results that we're seeing. Okay?
And just to put it in scale, if you go back to that, about a thousand students would be about between two-point-five and three percent of that cohort of three grades. So it's about just under three percent of those K-one and two students are getting that intensive support in our schools. And this is very systematic, very methodical, and with good records to see what is achieving the results that the students need.
Absolutely. I just also wanted to add in earlier this year, when we initially gave the presentation back in September, we'd had a lot of discussion about the critical parts of us looking at how students are performing before they get to grade-three. So while we will continue to look at how they're performing in reading in grade-three, we want to know what has helped them to get there by the time they get to grade-three or what have been the barriers. And so I just wanted to go back to that part because I know that was a large part of the discussion back in September when we initially looked at the data points. And looking at it in that way will help us better understand, we look at grade-three reading data now, what was happening before that could have contributed to things, areas that we need to continue to look at or things that we need to continue doing.
All right, we're gonna switch now to math, and I just want to go back to Dr. Smith's statement about you're gonna see some red. This is a check-in. And so this is a time where not only we at Central Office, but schools are stopping to see what's working for students and what's not working. And remember, we always talk about going from percents to numbers, numbers to names, names to faces, and I would add faces to plans. So the goal is to have a precise plan for every student who is not achieving two or three measures. That's our work in our offices here, and that's our work with schools. So we can understand and unpack where students are struggling and how can we support them in meeting two or three measures. So we're gonna start with the first slide for all students. We'll see here that in grade-three, we have sixty-seven point-five percent of the students meeting two or three measures, up to sixty-nine, seventy percent in grade-six and sixty-nine percent in grade-nine meeting two or three measures. When we look at the non-farms, white, Asian, and all other student groups, we see that our third graders are performing eighty-seven point-six percent two of three measures, ninety-one point-three percent in sixth grade, and eighty-seven point-eight percent in ninth grade. Our non-farm black, African-American students, we see, we range in ninth grade from sixty-four point-seven percent to sixty-eight point-five percent in third grade. Our non-farm Hispanic Latino students, we go from fifty-eight point-seven percent in ninth grade all the way to sixty-six point-seven percent. We know we still have some work to do in that ninth grade and sixth grade. In farms, white, Asian, and all other student groups, we have a range from fifty-nine point-seven percent in third grade up to sixty-nine percent in ninth grade, meeting two or three measures. In our farms, black or African-American students, we range from forty-seven point-six percent to fifty point-one percent meeting two or three measures across the grade levels. And then our farms Hispanic Latino students, ranging from forty percent, meeting two or three measures in grade-three to forty-six point-five percent.
So at, oh, sorry. So as we have shared and reviewed our system-wide evidence of learning data, we know that also each school receives and examines its own student performance, engages in a root cause analysis, and collaboratively builds a school improvement plan, or SIP. And not just one of our schools that we're featuring here, but multiple schools have utilized that process to move their student achievement forward. This SIP plan identifies goals for literacy and mathematics student achievement outcomes, identifies the necessary professional development for all staff, and attends to the social, emotional well-being of the students. We would like to highlight the ongoing work at Fox Chapel Elementary School and the positive gains in literacy and math for all students and specifically our African-American and Hispanic students. This collaborative SIP planning and implementation at the school level and productive partnerships with central offices, including Office of School Support and Improvement and the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Programs, Fox Chapel is using the new benchmark curriculum in literacy and delivering powerful instruction to all of its students. So let's take a look at Fox Chapel.
So each year in the school improvement process, our leadership team looks at a lot of data. We do not just numbered data, we're looking at teacher voice, parent voice, student voice. We met with every single student that is a focus in our building because that's what matters. What matters is what the student thinks, what the student perceives, because that's what's gonna get them to where they need to be academically.
Our professional learning communities have shifted over the past few years from being committees that planned events that were totally disconnected from the work of the school improvement plan to becoming the learning, the professional learning that happens in our building and really allowing for that kind of action research. You're learning about something, applying it to the classroom, reflecting on it.
We're looking at our focused student data, and we filtered-
Once a month, for every grade level, we have a data chat to discuss our focused students and what challenges and successes they've had over the last month. Then we make immediate changes to move them forward. We're looking at different data points, so it's allowing us to look a little closer at what students are able to do. So we're looking at the students and their individual needs, and we're putting things in place ahead of them getting that instruction.
And it's just a really nice classroom environment with a lot of confidence.
And being able to do it in a collaborative environment, you're getting the ideas of others as well and what might be working in one classroom that hasn't been implemented in another classroom. And there's a lot of staff buy-in for that reason and are willing to do the hard work involved because they see why we're doing it and what the end goal is.
Teachers are really digging down into standards for math and literacy and wellness. We're doing a lot of mindfulness, we have a huge mentoring program.
We've also implemented a Stanford Harmony program to help with our social-emotional learning. And in that, each week, the students have a buddy-up buddy. And students are getting to know their peers and then more able to work with them in a constructive way. This year, we've focused a lot on making sure that our students are available for learning. So we spent a lot of time with teachers talking about building relationships with their students to learn what might be happening when they're getting upset that might be keeping them from learning. Ultimately, we want them to remain in the classroom and recall those self-regulation strategies as they are needed.
Referrals to the office have drastically decreased this year.
You guys presented some really awesome goals related to your school improvement plan.
OSSI support has been instrumental in very specific things that we need. We ask, we get that support immediately.
And they provide us professional development directly with our teachers, especially for positions like our math content coach, reading specialist, staff development teacher. OSSI has provided us that support and that sounding board. And being able to also share with what they see at other schools working.
They're really helping us unpack the standards so that we can be better able to roll it out to students. So one of the big changes we've had in our school is the new benchmark literacy curriculum. I think the success of our students in this program is the systematic instruction, one lesson building on another. The ELD program is the component of benchmark. Hundreds of students are getting this thirty-minute-a-day pull-out ELD program. When they go back into the classroom, they can participate in conversations, they know the vocabulary, they're ready to write. And the data shows that that's been really beneficial for our ESOL students. We recently found out in our third-grade data that our focused students, our African-American non-farm students, a hundred percent of them are increasing in their SIP strand. They moved twenty-eight students to proficiency, more than a whole class of students from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Why is that? Because of the intentional and purposeful and circle-around teaching.
We're talking double-digit percentages of students going up just in three-quarters of a year. So our staff are doing a great job, and they're working smart, they're working hard. And our students are working smart and they're working hard. So that's what's making a difference in our school.
As my colleague Ms. Dyson mentioned earlier, you can hear that example of going from percents to numbers, numbers to names, names to faces. And the power of leadership at Fox Chapel, supporting staff leaders, teacher leaders, the assistant principal and the principal, that collaborative teamwork really makes a difference in what is happening in that school. And as we transition to some examples of data from Fox Chapel Elementary School, we look at the evidence of learning and what has occurred at Fox Chapel from 2018 to 2019. On this slide, we highlight the performance of Fox Chapel across two years for their grade-two students. In 2018, fifty-four point-eight percent of students met the evidence of learning at the end of the year. But this has increased to sixty-eight percent in literacy in 2019. Similar shifts were observed in mathematics, going from seventy-one percent in 2018 to eighty-four percent in 2019. So we're seeing that intentional, focused, strategic work around the school improvement plan paying dividends in terms of student achievement results. And then as we move over to the equity accountability model and the academic achievement component for Fox Chapel, the equity accountability model provides a detailed and focused assessment of school success and publicly monitors and reports all students' performance. The equity accountability model achievement, academic achievement component is built using the results from the evidence of learning. The academic achievement reporting uses the end-of-year evidence of learning results on student performance in literacy and mathematics for grades two and five combined for elementary schools. And what we're seeing here is Fox Chapel serves between sixty to eighty percent of students within our identified focus groups. In 2018, as you're seeing from this slide for Fox Chapel, you see where we are across those five focus groups. And you're seeing, especially on the mathematics side, four areas out of five in that gold or yellow kind of two range. But as we transition over to 2019, you're going to see that adjustment and that change both in literacy and in mathematics. But I want to point out that on the mathematics side, you see the change go from the two-point-two overall to two-point-eight. And I'd like to highlight that for our non-farms African-American, non-farm Hispanic Latino, and farm students in white, Asian, and all others, you see an increase to that next band. So we see green for our African-American and Hispanic students, and we see the move to the blue band for our farm students. So we're really excited about what has occurred in this particular school, and we know those stories exist across many of our schools at all three levels.
So we will now transition to a view of college and career readiness for our current seniors. As students progress through our system, the ultimate goal is graduating college and career-ready. Ordinarily, we would present graduation rate for the class of 2019, but as Dr. Smith shared, that won't be released from the state until tomorrow. What we can do now, though, is show the status of how students in the class of 2020 will look for being college and career-ready. The College and Career Readiness and College Completion Act of 2013, known as CCR-CCA, requires Maryland to prepare all students for college and careers upon graduation from high school. So overall, we see that for all students, eighty-six percent met CCR in literacy and seventy-eight percent met mathematics and seventy-six percent met in both. The green arrow along the side indicates how we compare to the report last year around this time for the class of 2019. You'll notice there was an increase for all areas. We have increased in the percentage of students meeting the CCR literacy and mathematics separately as well as meeting in both. Specifically, I ask you to note the CCR literacy score for all students at eighty-six percent and the score of our black or African-American student groups at eighty-point-nine percent. We are excited that we're closing the gap between the aggregate of all students and our African-American and black students. While we celebrate this accomplishment, we recognize we have more work to do for our African-American students in mathematics and Hispanic Latino student groups and for students receiving services, farms, special education, and limited proficiency. But again, I'd like to emphasize, all groups have noted increases, which highlights the efforts of our schools to ensure that students have CCR opportunities in literacy, math, and both. This view is the CCR for students in the monitoring group and the five focus groups. Again, you'll note that we've increased in all student groups. And at this time, we'll turn it over for questions.
I'm gonna start with Mrs. O'Neal with her on the table.
I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the SIP review at Ashburton Elementary School. And with Michelle Schultz and her three learning and achievement specialists, the leadership team at Ashburton, and, I mean, it was really seeing data put into action and, you know, the SIP process into action. And, you know, Ashburton is a very large elementary school with, you know, almost nine hundred kids. But the level of detail and examination and ownership of every child within that data was just so heartwarming to me and to, you know, everyone around the table, knowing exactly what was going on, reflecting on the data chats that the grade-level teachers have. They are implementing Eureka Math this year. The feedback was incredibly positive, which is a good sign. The one thing about literacy, you know, they don't seem to be concerned about, they, I guess you could pause a year in implementing the new literacy, the benchmark. But because of the positive, they are seriously considering about asking to participate in benchmark next year. But the other piece was the feedback on Orton Gillingham was really wonderful and a desire to have more staff trained is clearly something that we need to-
Yes.
-put an effort into making sure that more staff are trained because the root work of the phonemic awareness and the skills within Orton Gillingham, you know, benefit so many children. But anyway, I want to thank Greg Mulhouse and his team and Shelley Schultz for letting me participate. And I know that this, what I witnessed is going on across MCPS. And, you know, we can sit here and look at the data on the aggregate level, but the action really is at the school level about what is being done to own every child and to move that needle.
Thank you. Dr. Daca. It's gonna take me a while to digest all of this, so I'm not gonna ask any questions, but thank you for this, for all the work that you've been doing on it.
You mentioned some of the red caused by the implementation of the new curriculum, but only a third of the schools are implementing the new curriculum? Is that correct?
That is correct. So we didn't see, for the students who are still in curriculum two-point-O, it kind of maintained where they had been, they didn't significantly increase or decrease. And so when you take a third of those students who aren't quite demonstrating that proficiency at the grade level, it did bring, bring the whole cohort down or subgroup down.
Okay. And I imagine that's partly just teacher learning to use the curriculum and also rigor, additional rigor, is that correct?
Yes, it's teachers learning how to use the curriculum, it's different approach to instruction, it's trying to get the pacing right. We've heard a lot from teachers- We've heard a lot from teachers about they're not getting through all of the lessons. And so we just continue to say, stick with it. As they continue, week after week, it gets easier. The students get used to the types of discussion or routines. And then we'll be able to decide after a year where we might need to make some adjustments. But right now, we're asking people to stick with it the way it is designed.
I don't remember at what point last year, but we had a similar presentation about where we were. Maybe it was bitier, I don't remember. But some of the red was also explained by in fifth grade because they are reading grade-level texts. And now we're hearing the same thing again. At what point are we going to say, okay, grade-level text is the standard? It's no longer the reason why we might be seeing some red?
So that's a good question. I don't, you know, last year was the first year that we really pushed for introducing different texts in our, at the elementary level. And those students are now on to sixth grade and with new curriculums with StudySync. So I think they're, again, it's this adjustment to more rigorous text. There's significant amount of writing that they have to do. And, you know, using evidence-based questions and all of those things, I think students are just trying to adjust to. And our teachers, again, are trying to learn how to scaffold when students are not quite at grade level. So all of this is that adjusting and then trying to figure out, again, what's the standard for the assessments. So I think all of those pieces we're trying to, to figure out. But we do see, again, I think at the school, the school level, we are seeing progress being made with many, many of our schools or students.
And that was one of my other observations. It's hard to, there's no arrows up or down in this earlier part of the presentation, so it's hard to contextualize. Is this, there's reds, there's greens all the time and yellows, but is this any better than before? Are we ready to talk about improvements?
Next September, we will show you again. And that's where we will compare year-over-year changes. In the mid-year, we don't compare transition because we see what's happening at Fox Chapel. It's the actual work. The act, the thing that we'll want to know is what happens at the end of each of those grade levels this year? And then are we making gains year-over-year? And we show that every September. Now, as I said, we won't have an NCAP test. So that is always, that's why, that's why we use evidence of learning instead of just the state test. Because when you use just the state test, about every five to seven years, you get totally disrupted. And so we want to have, our schools have data and information. And I will go out on a limb with two things. One, I'll say that Nikki Hazel's been the champion of getting kids to read grade-level texts. And I think that's one of the single most important shifts we've made in our school system. Because, you know, you can teach a student at their instructional level, but when are they going to catch up? And so it's that combination of instructional level, grade-level text, scaffolding in between, and accelerating. And the other thing is, I'll tell you, it's going to take three to five years. Because you're not going to, one year and a grade-level text doesn't turn you from a third-grade reader in fifth grade to a fifth-grade reader in fifth grade. And I'm appreciating my elementary Ms. Dyson here in front of me nodding her head, yes. And, and so it's three to five years, I think, with the full implementation of the curriculum. And then you're going to be able to start seeing some shifts. And then we won't say the shift to grade-level text is not a problem anymore. But it takes time. It literally just takes time to move the, everything in a systematic way, the way we saw Fox Chapel moving things in a systematic way.
Another thing we heard last year was that eligibility was too low of a standard. And yet, we're still using it. Why is that?
Well, we're continuing to look at them. One of the questions that's now been on the table for a while and the policy committee is addressing is what to do with ninth-grade eligibility. You know, changing the culture of an organization, eligibility has been a very important factor here for many, many years. And so it's not our goal to dismiss it or disdain, have disdain for it. But it was a very important factor. And what we know is it's a good factor when you're talking about completion of high school and graduation. It's not nearly as strong when you're talking about reaching one of those college-career indicators. And so given that, that shift, then that's, that's another change we're going to have to make as we look at what to do with ninth-grade eligibility as a school system. And I know the policy committee is doing some work on that right now. So that'll be a change.
The Tier III interventions that you mentioned, in a typical classroom and in school day, when does that happen?
So it can happen during the reading block. If teachers begin, the expectation is everybody gets the whole group instruction. That's the grade-level instruction. And then many of, many schools have a system for when either the intervention's going to take place or the ESAL teacher might come in to provide supports. And so the students may be rotating in those groups at that time. And sometimes they find other times throughout the day to have interventions. It just depends on the school and their schedule.
And just my final question is, why do we still have so many reds for math? What's happened?
If we knew the answer to that, we could fund every budget from now till the end of the world because that is the, it's a national question. And I will tell you, from all of our high school data, when you look at our high school data, no matter what your race, culture, or income, you're better off in Montgomery County than almost anywhere else mathematically. And that's not good enough because we're still have so many students who are not reaching the standard in mathematics. And it's just, we're trying to unlock that right now. We have a, a group that works with Ms. Hazel and some specialists of teachers and administrators and teacher leaders coming together, just trying to tear it apart and figure out, what is the secret to making sure that we build the efficacy and the skill of our students in mathematics? And, and part of it frankly is, is found in our access. The numbers I shared around the OLL report a month ago. In 2015, we had 51 African-American students in poverty in fourth-grade accelerated math. That's just, that's expectations. In 2015, we had 61 across the entire system with accelerated math in every elementary school. 51, and we had 61 Hispanic-Latino students in accelerated math in fourth grade. That's an indictment of the system. It is, however, once you know it, you have to change it. And that's that effort to change it at the elementary and the middle, and then you'll see the results at the high school, which we're, we're seeing some results already. But we'll see a lot more as we build that access for students and raise our expectations about what they can and will do if we believe in them and we teach them in the way that we saw that school on that video teaching students very intentionally and deliberately. But if we knew the secret to math, we'd all be on the Today Show tomorrow morning because it is the thing that's plaguing this country, whether you're in pre-K or university.
Ms. Dixon. Oh, Mr. Tim, by the way.
I was just going to say, actually, we don't have any immediate questions, so thank you for the data.
Ms. Dixon.
So I would just say that, Carla, you asked all the questions I wanted to ask as well. No, that's fine, you know, because I won't have to talk that long. But once again, I will say that I think we hit a home run with the curriculum that we selected and purchased and all of its components. And, you know, I know the literacy. I'm not a big math person. I was pretty good in math until I got to algebra, I'll have to tell you. Then it was Greek to me. So, you know, and all that followed as, as well. But, you know, how many more schools will come on to, you know, do Benchmark in the literacy and the math next year? Do you remember? I, I know they get to opt in.
They do. So because our math data looks the way it does, we have really made a strong effort to have more of our schools in the math curriculum for next school year. We only had 17, 15 to 17 elementary schools who were going to wait till year three. So we just asked them to consider moving to, to do it next school year. So we will have all of our elementary schools and our middle schools in the mathematics curriculum for next school year. So we can really focus the professional development and school support around the mathematics. And then we also have some schools, like you said, who said, we want to stay the course and continue to do the literacy as well. So we won't have all of our schools doing literacy, but we'll have at least half who will be in the literacy curriculum and then year three.
Yeah. And I think it's really important to, well, I think we are moving ahead, but I think it's really important to focus on this like a laser beam and know what everybody is doing who teaches reading. And, and next year, I think Dr. Smith is right, we'll have more information that we can compare from year to year. And, you know, if we can see things moving up and ahead and closing, we're not going to close these gaps, I don't think. And, you know, I, I think it will take a while. But if we can make some improvements, I think this is really what we want. And you're absolutely right, Dr. Smith, about this being a problem all over the country and that our students are lucky, you know, that they're being educated in Montgomery County. But once again, I do think that we can do better with the reading piece. And so, thank you. So we'll, we'll keep watching, all right? And I'll be watching you when I'm gone, too.
And you'll be hearing from her, I have no doubt.
Ms. Smundrowski.
So thank you for the presentation. I'll try to be quick as well. But I just want to say how exciting, like that video at Fox Chapel, you know, when, right? I know, and I just love it. And it's obviously one of those things when we talk about best practices. And so one of my questions is, the work that's going on at Fox Chapel, does it cost more? Was there more of a, like, are they receiving some sort of extra resources that has a budget implication to it? Or, I, well, I think so, too. I just want to hear it said out loud that it's not a...
So Fox Chapel is one of our focus schools. So there are some differentiated supports that we ensure in terms of staffing and other resources. But realistically, having visited Fox Chapel this summer as the new curriculum was arriving and talking with Ms. Zabatakas about the way that her team really wrapped their arms around this challenge and decided that they were not going to let any barriers get in the way of their implementation of this work. There were folks that spent additional hours, looked for ways to make sure that they were ready to go from the start of the year. But I also want to point out that the professional development that Fox Chapel has been doing with their staff around culturally responsive teaching in the brain, that's been something that's been going on for 18, 24 months. So when you combine that commitment to professional development with a principal who's been at that school for 14 years, with a reading specialist and a staff development teacher that have been there for six years, and now folks know and understand how they work together, how to get the most out of their staff, and everybody's kind of pulling the rope in the same direction. And they're getting those gains because of that teamwork that's happened over time.
Well, I appreciate, like, to me, in fact, when our friends at Bethesda B. were asking, you know, about my running for reelection, you know, one of the biggest aspects of that was, you know, my hope that this is exactly what we would be doing with this data that we spent years putting together and really trying to use it to really be very specific about how we can improve student outcomes. And I feel like you see that there, so I hope that we will. I'm very excited about the curriculum, as I've said a couple of times, and, you know, Ms. Dixon has mentioned. And I'm, you mentioned that half of the school, about half the schools will be doing the literature as of next year. Are they, are more than that able to do it if they want? Because like I said, when I went toward schools the other morning, it was, it was, you could tell, the kids are, they're liking it. And, you know, I talked to some of the children and asked them, you know, what do you think? And they're like, we like these books. We like, they like the stories, yeah. And even just the work that I saw in the hallways about technology and the environment and all that kind of stuff from out of the new curriculum, I thought was really, it was really good. So I appreciate the presentation. Obviously, we've got work to do. But I really hope that all of our schools are looking at each child and each classroom and, you know, in every school as a way of making gains in these areas. So thank you.
Let me just comment one second. Ms. Smundrowski, much of our conversation tonight, you know, have been about this mathematics. And we saw a couple of graphs where we saw lots of red, particularly in math. Actually, we saw it for our farm students in mathematics and for reading. And one opportunity we're going to have is as we continue to implement this curriculum, like we had the ninth-grade algebra curriculum implementation piloted this year. And the more we're able to implement some of the curriculum pieces, the more we'll actually learn because we're able to compare apples to apples and be able to compare, as we were saying earlier, how our students are doing from one year to the next. And that'll be able to tell us a story over time. But I did want to highlight, as we implement the new curriculum, we saw one example from Fox Chapel tonight. And Diana Zabatakas, she's been there for a while. And, you know, unfortunately, we don't have her at the table because she is definitely a champion of that instructional leadership. But I think about Fox Chapel, and I said, that's the school that fits into that category of what we were very much concerned about. Because that's a school that represents 58% farms and, and 42% Latino farm students, or 42% Latino students, 26% African-American. But that farms is a, is a pretty big impact, yet they're able to make the progress. And we saw that in what they were doing. And what we saw in that video was a principal being an instructional leader at the awareness stage of the data and also at the practitioner stage, working through with students. And that's a critical part of it. And I'll say, Mrs. O'Neill mentioned Greg Ashburton, Greg Mullenhaus, again, an example of how a principal has to build that team to know and understand that data so that they actually own and understand the learning experience of every single student so that we can then follow up and do what we need to do to address their learning needs specifically. And so I look forward to us continuing to look at the consistency in the data over time as we implement this new curriculum. But also, as we've been talking about, the professional development here at the table this, tonight will be key because we're learning from many of our pilot schools about what it is that teachers need to even more successfully implement this curriculum, which, you know, we acknowledge and presented some, some curves for them. But in addition, you know, in addition to just implementing that new curriculum, them understanding that evidence of learning and knowing who the students are that fit into that and really monitoring the progression of their development is critical. Because we can have the curriculum here and implementing it and doing what we need to do. But we have got to, at the same time, monitor the progress of each and every single one of those students. And so the examples you all shared tonight and that we saw are just great examples. We want to continue to learn from them and learn from them on how are some of these practices that they implement at the school level actually helping these students who we saw tonight need that?
Yeah, and I really appreciate the highlighting, the collaborative work between the leader, the principal, administrators, and the central office folks and the teachers and the parents and things like that, the supports in the classroom. The reason I'd asked about if they, if it was costing extra money is because as we are doing the budget stuff
are doing the budget stuff and we're talking about where we want to put our dollars, professional development clearly is something that is worth investing in if it's going to give our staff a better opportunity to support our children. So I appreciate that.
And our specialists are a key part of that as well, as you were just...
Yes, exactly.
I'm next. Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, I just want to say as well, the other thing we saw in that video was that all the students were engaged. And something that Diana said that I don't know if we all picked up on, but because they were all engaged and because of the curriculum as well, that she's seeing a lot less referrals to the office, which is a huge, huge piece. And, you know, and that when students are not bored or, you know, they, they get in there. And so I think that's huge and the fact that she was in there in the classroom. Because, you know, actually, when the principals around, the kids like to please the principal and the teachers too.
And that she asked them.
Right.
What they wanted.
Yeah, yeah.
Dr. Daka.
Yeah, I apologize. Last Thursday, I think I looked at this one, I didn't find it on my computer, I'm sorry. So that's why I said, well, I really don't know. And I wanted to ask about Fox Chapel, that was a whole school endeavor. It included everybody, including the gifted and talented. Did that have anything to do with the scores or you're only looking at the ones who were not in there?
So, when we look at our five focus groups, it allows us to really go beyond any one program or any one initiative within a school. It allows us to really examine, as Dr. Smith has said numerous times, all meaning all and really looking at how our students are performing. And when we talked with Diana Zabitakis and her team, she talked about how this professional development that they've done over time is with all of their teachers, including the teachers in the Center for Enriched Learning. And they're also really digging down into that implementation of Benchmark across all grade levels, across all students at Fox Chapel.
Yes, I've seen her work with her staff. They are very engaged, they work very well together, she is so enthusiastic. So I'm glad to hear that. But I have a question about slides twenty-one and twenty-two. Maybe you can tell me, the external ninth grade scores are so high, why is that? I mean, what, what are they using that they're not using
Right.
in the district or in the classroom? It's just extraordinary, I think.
That's, go ahead, please. That is the, what we were talking about earlier is the eligibility and on track for graduation. And so in order to meet, right, they need a, a D, they need to get a D to earn a credit.
So they're pulled up?
What are you saying? That's why it's eighty point four for Latinos, what?
It's a low bar.
It's a low bar.
Right.
That's right.
But it's not a low bar for the other, the district in the classroom?
It's a C. For classroom grade.
Right.
Right? You can't do it that way.
We're working on that.
That's why we're changing it.
Okay.
Dr. Smith, any comments, final thoughts?
So, there are no ors here. When we think about our school system, we talk about our boundary analysis, how are we using our schools and what's the, the diversity of our schools, what are all of the things that are going on in our schools? So that's, that's at the biggest picture. And then we look at how our clusters are working together and how they're really coming together around different questions in their cluster. That's a big, big general question. Then we look at a new curriculum and an expectation of reading grade level text in the elementary and especially early middle school, the expectation that everyone can do math. You can see how it's building inward toward that school building. And then we look at our professional learning. What does your school need? What does your school improvement plan say as you work together as teachers and teacher leaders and principals and assistant principals? And then finally, what's happening intentionally in every single classroom with every single child? That's what changes it. So when we talk about data and people say, well, those are just numbers. No, those are real, live kids who deserve real, live, good opportunities, every one of them. And the day we can no longer predict what those numbers will look like based on race or culture or income or services is the day we can declare success. And that's really just so critically important and I just want to point out, the people over here and Val over here. I just want to say, they did invite Val to come sit over there, Maria gave her a bad time. But I just want to say, this, this is what will change what needs to happen for kids. And I want to say to the four of you, thank you so much for all of your work. I mean, you really have dug in and you're making a profound difference for kids as well as all of your colleagues sitting behind you and all the ones who are not here tonight. But it, it's making a profound difference. And we're starting to see places all over that are changing. And we, we've done such good work for decades for kids. Now if we can just take it, the next step up for every kid, then, then, and if it can be done in this country, it can be done right here in Montgomery County. It can be. This is the place it can happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Love the student buy-in. I just started saying, yeah, because it's just... I've never heard anybody say, okay, we actually pass the kids a ticket.
So at this time, we come to item nine on our agenda, consent items. Are there any board members that wish to pull an item? If not, can I get a motion to move them all block?
I just, I just have one quick question. Can we, can I ask a question about one and rather than, and then just move them in block? Or no? It's okay. I was just trying to save time.
Yeah. Pull the whatever you want to pull.
Okay, it's just the one.
What is it?
McDonald's Knowles Early Childhood.
Under which one? Oh, nine point seven? Nine point seven.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
So can we get a motion to move the rest in block?
Second.
To move the second and all in favor? And that is unanimous?
My question was just simple. It's recent, January first, 2020, but that's passed. So are we voting on a contract that's already been signed or is this just...
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
So we already have an arrangement with them. This is to have essentially a short-term interim arrangement until the end of the school year that gives us the time to negotiate a longer-term lease.
Right. That part I got, I was just curious because it, it read that it was, went into effect January first, so I wasn't sure, has it already been signed and we're just...
No, we're waiting for, we're waiting for board approval.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get, okay. All in favor? Nine point seven. That's unanimous. So can I get a motion to move item ten point one and ten point two and block?
Moving one.
It's been moved a second and all in favor. Okay, that's unanimous. Do any board members have any new business item to bring forward? Nope. And I guess if I can get a motion on ten point three.
Second.
Well, I was, well, hold on. I was getting you to do ten point three since there was nothing. I did the two point one and two point two and blocked. Is there a second?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We have a second.
Okay. You guys moved a, you, you moved a der. Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that I come back and say, Sherry, we didn't do all this. Okay. So all in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay, so now can I get, so item eleven is for information purposes only, can I get a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Okay. It's been moved a second and all in favor? And that is unanimous. We are adjourned. You guys are funny.